Good evening. This is Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. This is the Select Board meeting. This is being recorded by Whitman Hansen Cable Access Television. And if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by the common purpose of liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ryan, before we go to public announcements, I did want to just have a moment of silence. I was just talking to Mr. Hickey about somebody that we both are extremely fond of, who was a volunteer and a Vietnam veteran. Ernest Jutres passed away. And some of you may not know Ernie, but you might remember during the last couple of years of COVID, on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, you might have had the privilege to witness this veteran walking by himself with an American flag. Because we weren't holding events, our Veterans Agent, out of an abundance of caution, wasn't holding events with groups, but Ernie felt very passionately that something should continue to be done to honor veterans. And so he was that guy, that single person, holding a flag and making a statement and marching down the road. So if you don't mind joining me for a moment of silence for Ernest Jutres. Thank you. And Mrs. Green, with that, may I impose upon you to read the public announcements?
Please remember, early voting has started at Town Hall. A reminder to all town of Hanson residents that second quarter fiscal year 23 real estate and personal property taxes are due today, Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. All Hanson residents who received fuel assistance last year should have already received a reapplication form for the upcoming year, which begins today, November 1st, 2022. If you have not received your reapplication, please contact self-help at 508-588-0447. If you have received it and are in need of assistance in completing it, please call the Senior Center and they will be happy to assist you at 781-293-2683. Hanson residents who would like to apply for fuel assistance for the first time should contact the Senior Center to schedule an appointment at 781-293-2683. Appointments will begin the last week in October. The Hanson Senior Center is hosting its annual Veterans Day breakfast on Thursday, November 10th at 9:00 a.m. If you haven't attended in the past, please feel free to join us this year. Tim White plans to talk about some of the major changes in law, PACT Act, Camp Lejeune Justice Act, that directly impact veterans and their surviving spouses. He also will have at least one guest speaker from the VA to talk about the Veteran Community Care Program. Please RSVP by next Tuesday, 11:08. Hope to see you there. Upcoming events, Town Meeting, November 9th, 2022. Editorial comment, please get the word out and get people there so we can have a forum. Strategic Planning Session, November 19th, 2022. Select Board, December 6th, 2022. Select Board, December 13th, 2022.
Are we missing a meeting there? I did think we were meeting November 15th as well, Ms. Green and Mrs. McDowell, but...
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, November 15th, 2022, for a Select Board meeting.
And thank you, Mrs. Ryan. Okay, first up on our agenda is a general discussion regarding the ZBA investigation and possible future mitigation efforts. This is definitely not going to be a once and done tonight. So, as you will recall, our last meeting, October 11th, I believe it was, as we were meeting, we got the results of the investigation delivered to us. But let's just go and kind of set a little bit of a history of how we got to where we are. So in August of 2021, the Hanson Select Board received a citizen's petition compelling the Select Board to place an article in the upcoming October 2021 special Town Meeting to investigate allegations of potential conflicts of interest between and amongst the zoning Board of Appeals members. That petition was signed by 150 registered Hanson voters. In October of 2021, the article requesting an investigation passed unanimously with 130 Hanson voters in attendance at Town Meeting. And not one member of the audience stood up to say anything against moving forward with that investigation. So at the October 19th Select Board Meeting, which was the Select Board Meeting next following that Town Meeting, all of the Select Board members, Matt Dyer, Kenny Mitchell, Jim Hickey, Joe Weeks and I, voted to move forward with hiring somebody to conduct the investigation. We understood that there was a clear mandate to look into the allegations against the ZBA, and as the appointing authority for the ZBA, we knew it was our responsibility to do so. In late November of 2021, the Board engaged an individual to conduct the investigation. The investigator was provided all of the complaints and allegations the Select Board had received to date, and our Town Administrator was appointed as the point person for contact information and documentation requests. And there's nobody here that's going to tell you that that investigation didn't take far longer than we would have liked. And I completely recognize that for all of us, and I do mean all of us, that it made a difficult situation even more difficult because of the delays. And there were a lot of different reasons that there were delays. We had some difficulty obtaining necessary documentation. The investigator kept uncovering things that then would lead him to think that he needed to look at something beyond what we had originally told him to look at. Most of what he was looking at were the concerns that Ms. Cohen had articulated in various letters and complaints to the Board. And so that was most of what he was working on. And he had personal matters to attend to. We had some people that didn't fully cooperate. And anyway, it took a lot longer than it should have. But throughout that, the Board remained very committed to being thorough and allowing the investigator to do what he thought he needed to do to do this investigation. We wanted to make sure that at the end of the day, when the investigation was finished, that we had tried to address the concerns that were expressed in the citizen's petition and voted on at Town Meeting. Now, there were things that came up during the investigation that if we had pursued a larger scope, would have resulted in this, I don't even want to think about honestly how much it would have added to the cost. There were lots of wormholes that we could have gone down, had the investigator go down, but we didn't. We tried to stick to what the original citizen petition was so that we were, you know, we were reflecting the will of the people. So, as I said, on October 11th, the investigator delivered his final report in what could only be described as a very dramatic moment in the middle of our meeting. And then the Select Board got it the following day, and the ZBA members and the public, ZBA members were given copies, and then the public were able to see it up on our website the following week. And that was really done as a result of Ms. Green and Ms. McDowell getting a lot of requests for it. And honestly, we were just like, we're just going to put it up on the website. It's, you know, there's nothing to hide. We're trying to be as transparent as possible. So that's where we're at. We were supposed to meet last week. I had some health concerns, which I'm not going to get into any detail. But, so I called our Vice Chair, Joe Weeks, to ask if he wanted to chair the meeting in my absence, with the possibility of having me join virtually. And then after, we discussed it for a while, and I, you know, Joe and I agreed that we really thought all five members needed to be physically present for a discussion of this importance. So I apologize to folks that were planning on being here last week, and for anybody that, you know, had to change their schedules around. That certainly wasn't intentional. But I'm sure you're all so glad that I didn't share the wealth with you last week. So we'll just leave it at that. So there's a lot of pent-up emotion around this investigation, and we've got two things tonight on the agenda having to do with ZBA. The first is a general discussion, please come in and sit down, a general discussion of the report. And I say "general" because we have to be careful if we are in an open session, we cannot discuss the conduct or the findings of the report as it relates to one individual, or any individual really, unless we've posted it as a hearing. And we did not post tonight as a hearing. So we can talk generally about the process, about some of the general findings, but we're not going to drill down on each individual member of the ZBA. And I think that's important because I know that's going to be people's compulsion will be to want to get into the nitty-gritty of the report. And I think one of the things that this Board needs to decide is, at a future meeting, are we going to have hearings for everybody, for nobody, for, you know, we need to have a conversation about that. And I think one of the things reading through the report, and I'm sure anybody that's read through it will agree, that we can use this exercise, if you will, as a learning opportunity for how we might do things better as a town. How we might do things better as far as vetting applications, as far as questions that we ask of people, and the way that we generally conduct some of the things we do with volunteers. So there's definitely some, I think, learning in there for all of us. And I think that's also something that I would like to see this Board talk about. And again, we're not going to do that this evening, you know, but I do think that we need to sit down at some point and talk about, you know, how do we prevent any kind of perception out there that this might happen again? So with that, we'll get to the, we'll get to the report. Again, just want to caution people that we're not going to get into the specifics of individuals, but I thought I would just kind of ask the Board what you wanted to say about the report in a general way, if you had anything you wanted to share.
It's a learning experience, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
It's very hard to keep it general. I'm not sure what the next steps you said about doing individuals, but there's a lot of individual information in here.
Yes, there is a lot of individual information. I think, you know, if you're looking at it, probably looking at the executive summary is important. And I think the process that the investigator went through, what the investigator looked at, again, it wasn't exhaustive because we have limited funds and we had a limited scope. And so I appreciate that he tried to stick within the limited scope there. I think there are some things that we can talk about that are general. There were some concerns expressed about reorganization, and then, I'm doing air quotes because that's what it was called, and then difference in style of minutes. I think that he, Mr. Lampke, the investigator, kind of said there was no issue there with the reorganization. I shouldn't say that there wasn't an issue, that at the end of the day, when everything played out, there was no harm or foul about the way that the reorganization was done. He did make some comments about, you know, people voting that shouldn't have, et cetera, et cetera. But at the end of the day, he concluded that there really wasn't any detriment to the town because there were no meetings that happened between the questionable reorganization and then the one that ultimately stood. And so it wasn't like any votes had to be thrown out or anything like that. So I think that's some good news. And then there was also a question about a difference in style of minutes, which I'm not really, I don't really know, you know, why that was concerning, but I guess it was concerning to folks, yes.
It was concerning because the minutes were written in a vague manner that made it easy to, it didn't cover everything. That was a comment that I heard, was that the minutes were too vague, didn't give all the information that they should have.
And that might, you know, people are certainly...
I've heard that about other boards in town too, though. It's not just the ZBA.
Yes, I think, I think minutes seem to be...
Minutes are an issue.
Minutes vary from department to department and committee to committee. That said, Lampke said that, you know, he felt comfortable with the explanation that the Administrative Assistant for the ZBA gave, which was that it was logical and factual explanation, and that there should be no issue with the minutes in that regard. So he really didn't think that that was a concern. And then I think the piece that I think we're going to have to delve deeper in and talk much more about is the list of recommendations. It's clear that, at the very least, we probably want to do some additional training around disclosures, and when they're required to be made, and under what conditions, and to whom they should be made. And I do know that there was a, Ms. Green, did you have Ms. McDowell print the piece that I had asked about?
Chair, that was for all committees, not just the ZBA.
Oh, no, I'm saying for everybody. I think this is a lesson for everybody. And if you'll recall, when we first, I think the first year that we were on the Board, we had Town Council come in and just talk to us about what we should file for disclosures and that. Of course, we've had a couple of years where, you know, I don't want to mention the dreaded, you know, pandemic, but we did have a couple of years where probably we couldn't have done too much about that. But we're back again and in person, and we probably need to take notice and do something about that. There were some questions in the interview that Mr. Lampke had had with several people where they had mentioned that disclosures that were made to our Board were missing. And I want to remind people that back when these were first mentioned, which was in July of 2021, we had asked the Town Clerk about these purportedly missing disclosures. And just so that everybody's clear, up until, very recently, up until like the last six months, nobody ever filed disclosures directly with the Select Board. They were always filed with the Town Clerk, and then she would cause a copy to be given to the Select Board or not. And so Beth Sloan, as our Town Clerk, was always the person who the disclosures went to. So...
Are there multiple copies?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there are, I'm sorry. I thought she was just giving me this power. So I had asked Lisa in anticipation of the meeting to circle back with Beth and to verify what had happened with the purportedly missing disclosures, because I think this is important. It speaks to the integrity of our office and of the Town Clerk, and I think it's critical that we dispel any rumors or allegations that were made, because it's actually even mentioned in this report. So I've got an email from Elizabeth Sloan, our Town Clerk, to Lisa Green, our Town Administrator. Hello, Lisa. Back in March of this year, I was unable to locate a disclosure form that I had for Kevin Perkins. Kevin and all the ZBA members had filed a conflict of interest disclosure with the Town Clerk's office in July of 2021. Unfortunately, we had been asked on a number of occasions to scan and fax the records over to different individuals, and Kevin Perkins' disclosure was not put back into the file. This was discovered when another individual asked for the disclosures and was told we didn't have one for Mr. Perkins. Kevin reminded me that we did indeed have a disclosure for him, and I was able to locate it. I did apologize and felt awful that I had misplaced a form that was on file in the Town Clerk's office. So I just mentioned that because it was called out in the report, and I think it's important that we have the facts. And I don't know that Mr. Lampke actually, I don't know that, because he was acting independently, I don't know that we ever responded to that allegation in his report.
Ms. Chair, may I add that, it was my quote to the investigator that I gave that quotation report. And what that was is, that was the State Ethics Commission calling Mr. Perkins and asking for his disclosure, because he had called the Clerk's office looking for that disclosure, and it was not on file. And my understanding of it was that Mr. Perkins luckily had to locate an original copy, give it to the Clerk, and then it circled back around to the State Ethics Commission, or the Selectmen and the Clerk. That time, I understand they had found no wrongdoing on his behalf with the State Ethics Commission, but that's how the disclosure appeared. It didn't appear within the Town Hall, it appeared by Mr. Perkins.
All right, well, I've got a statement from Ms. Sloan. I'm just reading what she said.
I understand, I just want to clarify, it was my quote.
I have no question to, I have no need to question, you know, Ms. Sloan. Okay, so is there anything else that anybody would like to say generally about the report? No?
I don't know how to say, how to keep individuals out of it, but there are things that I think, since then, there have been bylaws added to change some of the rules and stuff like that. And I think it is a learning experience, and I'm hoping the best comes out of this for the Town of Hanson and as many people involved as possible. Without, it's very, like I said, it is very hard to not drill down into individual members of the Board, when almost every paragraph in this is linked to a specific person.
Okay, so...
This is a question on... Madam Chair, I don't think, you know, it is very tough, like Ed had said, to do this without mentioning names or names, but without mentioning names, Exhibit M is a total dead end, and I'm not sure if you're calling it a wormhole or not, but, you know, we're discussing members of the ZBA, and this all takes place before that member became a member of the ZBA.
I don't even know what Exhibit M is.
It's talking about July 31st, 2014, Elm Street in Hanson, July 31st, 2014, Nina Drive, Hanson, October 8th, 2015, Country Road. These are all, and the other three aren't even in Hanson, which I don't think affects this or what we're looking to do at all. But these were all from a concerned citizen that made this investigation last longer, with the individual that's questioned at the top of it, who's not a member of the ZBA and has never been. But, you know, this was thrown in the investigation, for what reason, I don't know. It makes zero sense.
Okay, thanks for that. I guess, so we've got, if we read the executive summary, there are statements that the investigator has made that are suggesting that there are some members who may have disclosure issues and others that might not have disclosure issues. And I guess if we, I'm trying to be careful. So if we, hearings need to be had if we believe that a hearing is merited. Hearings can be held for, only for those members who are currently in an appointed office. So in that case, it would be Mr. Buckley and Mr. Perkins, who are currently in office. Okay? And we're not discussing this, I'm just discussing that this is what the summary is. We're not delving into the validity of this at all. This is what the investigator has said. So hold on, Mr. Cushing. So I think the question at hand is, how would the Board like to proceed, given the executive summary with this report?
Madam Chair, I'd make a recommendation. I would like to clarify for the record, I am the lone one in the ZBA at this point. I'm supposed to be appointed. I would like to clarify for the record, I'm not talking about permanent members of the Board, but in terms of my part, the investigation, for the public and people here, I would just have to clarify a few points, and...
We're not posted to do that tonight?
Yeah, we're posted to discuss the investigation.
We're not posted to talk about you specifically. We can definitely talk to legal counsel and get an opinion on whether that would be appropriate, but what I don't want to do is violate the regulations about public hearings.
Well, you know, I'm an informed adult, and it says, general discussions regarding ZBA investigation.
By the Board, which is us.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm saying is that I would like to clarify any ambiguity, because I think it's important for the public to understand, you know, specifically to me...
Mr. Cushing, I'm trying to give some latitude, because I do appreciate the position that you're in, and I understand that you're in a bit of a weird, you know, like, place because you're not on the Board right now. And so even if you said, I want a hearing, like, I want to have a hearing, I'm just, I'm not sure, I'm being 100% honest, I don't know, you're in this weird gray area, and we're going to have to ask legal counsel about it, because I don't want this to come back around and find out that we've unwittingly done something weird that we weren't supposed to. So...
Yeah, I'm a citizen, I'm a citizen right now of Hanson, and I was investigated as part of this ZBA investigation. So I would say that I am not a Board member currently, and I would think that if I feel comfortable as an adult to, I'm not talking about any other Board member, talking specifically to me, just to clarify a few points, you know, it would take me five minutes to...
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Cushing, but do you hear what I'm saying to you? That I don't know what the legal risks are for us doing that, and I cannot, in all good conscience, proceed with doing that now. If, when we get to the section where we're talking about appointments, if you want to make a, and I'm going to caution you here, because we've got a history where I lay down, I lay down what the rules of engagement are, and you just roll right over them. So I want to make sure that you can, I want to give you an opportunity to state in a positive way, without getting mired in the details, what your position is. And I think at the last, I believe it was at our last meeting, it's becoming a blur, but I believe at our last meeting, you had indicated that, you know, it's a bit of the nature of the beast, that you're, you know, that if you're a contractor, you're going to work with people, and that, so if you stick with that type of kind of a...
Generalizations.
Yes. I think we should be fine when we get to that section of our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I really truly am trying to be as responsive as I can to what you say.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Madam Chair.
If you could state your name and...
My name is Alan Camard, I just have a question about protocol for the ZBA. Are ZBA meetings recorded, either visually or audibly?
I believe audibly they are.
Would that consist of a complete meeting minutes to just review the audible text of the meeting as it went on, so you have a specific reference for comparing with a meeting of the Selectmen that's recorded visually as well?
I'm not, I'm not really sure.
What he means is, would that qualify as minutes? Is that what you're saying?
Right, yes. So, a question came up that the minutes that were submitted from the ZBA differed from the protocol of minutes for other committees.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah. You know what? But, yes, that question did come up, but the investigator basically said there didn't seem to be any foundation for alleging that, that it, he spoke to the admin, you know, their administrative assistant who said, "It was a much simpler meeting, so I kept simpler notes."
Yeah.
And they were simpler minutes because there wasn't anything complicated on the agenda.
Right.
So, but I don't know if that answers your question.
Rather, yes.
Okay.
I just was figuring that would be a complete transcript of that sort of pretty damn good meeting of the minutes.
I think that there's something legally though about having to have them written.
Yeah, yeah, there is. You are required, so, just to be clear, so, there's no requirement, although we're working on this, but there is no requirement under Massachusetts general law to record your meetings, either, either on a tape or videotape or whatever. You are required to produce minutes for your, for your, you know, for your meetings. So, I don't, I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, because I was...
Okay. Mr. ...
Yeah, just technically, just because, you know, even if you were to video it, audio record it, you have to write them down because they have to be certified. That's the key. They have to be written down and then certified and that to be filed and certainly archived.
Yes, I understand. I was a secretary for a local law judge. I was in charge of producing minutes.
Yeah.
I understand.
And so, just so you know, our town is, is moving in the direction where we will, we will require all boards and committees to either videotape or sound, you know, audio record, but in discussing it with the town clerk, she was really clear that she doesn't want that to be our primary way of, of keeping minutes because it gets into this weird, you know, like if, for instance, we lose power or the videotape isn't, you know, isn't available, whatever. So, that will always just be like a secondary kind of courtesy, you know, but, but so that people can follow along because a lot of times the minutes, no matter how well intentioned somebody are, they are a reflection of somebody's interpretation of what's said. So, yes.
So, just to get back on this, one of the things I was, I was thinking is, you know, we have two, two former members, so this, this investigation is about ZBA members as they were sitting on the board.
Mm-hmm.
So, if two of them aren't here, I don't think it's relevant to bring it up right now unless, as you were saying a sec, a second ago, it becomes part of the interview process and then I think it's appropriate to talk about it because it becomes relevant.
Mm-hmm.
Especially when it comes to the disclosure piece and what that looks like. For the members that are still on the board that are identified here, I think it's appropriate that if there's, if the board wants to go down this road, to hold a hearing based off of that because it, either there's no implication, I think there's one that says, does not appear to have a, have had compliance issues and then there's some that say that they do have some compliance issues. So, I think it would be fair to have, for the folks that are on the board that have compliance issues, for the board to consider the hearing, for the ones that they don't, because determined they don't, we don't, and the ones that aren't on the board anymore, it's a moot point and it only gets brought up if, you know...
Okay. So, are you making a motion?
Well, I'm just putting it out for the board to consider.
Okay.
Part of the discussion. I'm not saying it's the best thing.
Will you say something that's right?
Well, I mean, I can't, you're going to have to stop me if I go too far because I can't disagree with Joe Moore because we have three members or we have two people that it does not appear, in a highlight, it does not appear, and one member that resigned because he didn't get reappointed is named here.
Right. No, I don't think you guys are saying it's something different. I, I think you're saying the same thing.
But in July, I had said, "Reappoint both of them." And if it comes time when the investigation is done and we are not satisfied with the, you know, with reappointing both of them, have the hearings because they're both being members and as it turns out, we're having a hearing anyway.
But we're not having a hearing for Mr. Cushing.
I didn't say Mr. Cushing, I said, "No names."
Yeah.
"We're having a hearing anyway." But for these two gentlemen that are not on the board, we're not having a hearing unless they get reappointed tonight.
That's right.
Which we could have reappointed them in June when I suggested it the first time and it was turned down and the second time, which was turned down.
Mr. Hickey, it was a board vote. It was a board vote.
It was a vote.
You were the only person voting that night.
Correct.
The other four members voted differently.
And I still feel that same way because this is just 65 pages of not that much.
Okay, well...
That we spent a ton of money and a ton of time. It's not just the money we spent, it's the time spent.
I'm well aware, Mr. Hickey.
I'm sure you are.
And it was, it was doing what the people had asked at town meeting.
Correct.
So, 150 people signed a petition and 130 people at town meeting with not one person standing up to say, "Wait a minute, I don't think you guys should do that."
And now it's up to the five of us to do the right thing according to what is written in this investigation.
All right, so you've made a suggestion that two, that we perhaps entertain a investigation for two of the existing members.
Someone says?
Mrs. Rain?
I think that we have to do what the townspeople, we did what the townspeople wanted. I think we're going to have a vote tonight that will settle part of this and I think we ought to proceed to that rather than wrangling over the same words over and over and over again.
Okay.
Just to be, just to be clear, I'm actually saying exactly what Jim's saying. There are two people here that says, "Does not appear."
Right.
That are sitting on the board.
Right.
We don't investigate them. There's one that says, "We, there is a complaint, there is an issue." We do investigate that. And then there are two others that are no longer on the board, so it's a moot point.
Right. Well, okay, since...
Yeah, just, just to be clear.
Just so we're clear, this is the executive summary and we're not going beyond this.
Right.
Okay? Joan Manuti does not appear to have an issue. Joshua Prati does not appear to have a compliance issue. Sean Buckley appears to have one, Bill Cushing appears to have one, Kevin Perkins appears to have one. Of those members, Ms. Manuti is still on the board. Mr. Prati is not, Mr. Cushing is not, Mr. Buckley and Mr. Perkins are.
Yes, yes, okay.
So...
Yeah, for those two, yes.
Okay. Mr. Heel?
I, I wish I knew the right way to go. I'm confused about if we do appoint a member, is that then, if, if you're saying you want to investigate anybody that appears to have some type of disclosure, would you then add that person? I, I am kind of leaning towards personally, there are disclosure issues that were uncovered, but to me, how big they are is a concern. And I don't know if the people want to clear their names or whatever, but it just, to me, it doesn't, I'm not seeing anything, seeing this huge, "Oh my goodness, he paid this," you know, this bribery or anything else going on. It's, a couple disclosures might not have been, maybe I'm, maybe I read it wrong, but it seems like maybe a couple disclosures weren't, weren't put in place and, and I'm just, I'm just not sure of the gravity of it and what the next steps are, given that it just, it, there are, I'm not saying there aren't issues that are brought up, but I'm just not sure that if, the issues that were uncovered ride, raised as high as it, as it seems. And there might be other things that weren't investigated. It seems like there were a few different times where he didn't continue to, to look and I kind of wish he did because it could have been more uncovered.
Well, he had a limited budget.
But we've got to go based on this.
Yeah. Okay, so, so, do people want to have an investigation on the two members that are, have had disclosure issues? And it doesn't, and I think to your issue, to your point, you know, decide at that time whether there's anything that, because then you're able to get, have a conversation and you can ask questions of the individuals and...
I agree with, I agree with that.
And we may end up actually clarifying some of what's in this report by just having a conversation.
I agree with that.
And, what are your thoughts on that, Mrs. Rain?
More money. Has to be budgeted.
Oh, no, 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 we, this is, this is...
More investigation.
No, no, I'm sorry, this is us.
You meant here.
I, I meant, I'm sorry.
Well, I already said...
I meant a hearing.
What, yes, a hearing is, that's fine with a hearing.
That's no additional money for us.
Okay.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion. I'm sorry, who was...
Can I just say something?
Not at this time, Mrs. Joyce, just a moment, okay? We're, we're still deliberating here.
Well, well, it has to be deliberated.
Mrs. Joyce, Mrs. Joyce.
I'm just saying.
Mrs. Joyce, this is the board deliberation and I've asked that you please wait.
Okay, I thought it was a general discussion.
It's a board discussion, Mrs. Joyce.
Why are we here?
Yeah.
Why are we here?
Yeah. There's no general discussion.
I'm, I'm trying to have a conversation with the board. Once we finish our conversation, I'll be more than glad to open it up and take limited comments and questions.
It's like you're putting the hat...
Mrs. Joyce?
She's asked her will be right. You're putting the hat before the huss.
Okay, I appreciate that people feel passionately about it, but the board does have an ability in a right...
They've already done the investigation, they came out clean.
We, all right.
Obviously, they didn't.
We read it, what we...
You're moving along too fast.
Mrs. Joyce, I'm going to ask you one more time to refrain. Okay, so...
I'll just put it out there for the sake of putting it out there for a vote, but I'll make a motion that we hold a hearing for Sean Buckley and Kevin Perkins to discuss findings in the investigation report.
I second it.
Okay. And at this point, and again, I want to caution that we're not plumbing the depths of any of this stuff in here. And, Mrs. Joyce, if you would like to, you had something you wanted to share with us?
Yes, it just seems like you're moving along too quickly on investigating people that are on the board, that have been on the board before, okay? And that, I know, Mr. Hickey, because I was here the night that you had the motion that there are three-month trial period or whatever to move on and all four of you didn't even say anything, but Mr. Hickey was the one that said, "Why don't we continue with the full term until the investigation is over?" And then I know that the other person declined, let me see how, I'm trying to get my thoughts together, but they said that they would step down from that position if the investigation proved that they were clear of all charges.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's what, I feel that there's like four against one up there on the board and that all of you are afraid to make a move and step on someone's toes, okay, because of 150 people and then you're proven innocent, you're guilty before you're proven innocent and now where innocent charges have appeared, okay, it's like you're preparing to change things and not be open to the, the good of the people that have been on that board before.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Joyce. And sir, I think you had, and if you don't mind stating your name and...
Sure, Jerry London.
Yep.
Been a resident for 35 years, known Billy for three or four years. He's done nothing but the right thing by the time, he's educated, you know, on most zoning boards that I've visited. He's got common sense, which a lot of people don't have today. He's compassionate, he talks to people and you want to railroad him out of town for whatever reasons, it's, I don't know if somebody's jealous or somebody, what the deal is, but it doesn't make sense to me to have a good position, fellow position. I've been in business all my life and putting a team together is the biggest thing you can do in business and that's what you people are here to do is run the town and spend our money. We've spent our money going down these rabbit holes because somebody is jealous or somebody's got a problem with Billy. And I find that you're wasting a ton of time when you should be starting, getting together and do things. And I've visited the planning board, Tony's a great guy, the building inspector, the health board, all these people are doing a good job and for some reason, somebody's got a problem with Billy and maybe Kevin and you're trying to railroad him out, out of town. You've got the good people, the right people right here working with you, work with them. And like Mr. Hickey said, put them in, he came out claiming your investigation, why are you trying to railroad him, get him out of town? Doesn't make sense to me. Who's doing the right thing? Put him back in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. London. Mr. Buckley? I just, I did give a bit of latitude, Mr. London, because you had, you had had your hand up, but we're not actually at the appointment part of our...
I'm not familiar with all...
No, it's fine, it's fine.
The common sense part is what I'd like to see you people use because you're the people who are elected to the position. I would love to be up there with you and use my common sense, but please use your common sense and don't be afraid of a guy or girl next to you. Get it, get it, get it and get it right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Buckley?
I just, it's kind of weird not to be able to talk about myself, but if I'm to talk in general about the investigation and I'm wondering how you guys feel about someone that may be listed in the investigation that it says may have disclosure issues, but through the whole investigation, the disclosure issues, there's not a single one ever referenced where that particular person maybe should have filed one. There was one that that person filed when they should have filed it and then under Section 23, which is very arbitrary, it's implying that maybe a disclosure should have been filed, but it never gives a single instance to where the disclosure could have been filed. And then you're talking about having a trial on one of those people.
Well, not, not a trial, I want to be clear and I'm sure, I'm sure it feels the same way, but it's not, it's not a trial, it's just a hearing and it's, and it's, it can either be executive session, which is just us with you, or it can be... No, 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 I, I get what you're saying.
You're going to have a hearing on the person when there's things that say there may be a disclosure issue and it alludes to a whole bunch of things through the whole thing, which are completely false and unfortunately, some of the things could have been found in two seconds on a Google search. And then it kind of falsely goes through the whole impression through the whole thing that those things may be true by not just finding them false in two seconds, which how long that investigation took, couldn't find those, it was, it seems kind of pointed to me, so...
Yeah, I mean, you're not, and thank you, Mr. Buckley, and you're not going to find anybody giving this investigation a gold star for a number of different reasons. It, it, I, I understand what you're saying, there's a lot of vague references, some specificity, but in weird places and...
Well, in particular with the one person I'm talking about, there's no specificity, just, hey, maybe they should have filed the disclosure. No reference to what, in any instance, where they should have. But somehow, they were the ones that weren't cleared, I guess, where it says, you know, this person's okay, they did what they needed to do.
Okay.
You know, there's someone in particular that may have, at some point, should have filed the disclosure, but gives no instance at all to where that should have been.
I, I hear what you're saying, I really do. I, I hear what you're saying and I'm sure it's aggravating. We, we didn't have any control over the product that he produced, you know, like we literally intentionally left him alone to do his thing so that nobody would ever say, "Well, you guys manipulated the investigation or you didn't take to the pod or you were in constant contact and you were looking for some certain thing." We were like, "Take the wheel, tell us what you come up with." Occasionally, my understanding is that he was in contact with Kevin Sullivan, who was our interim for a while, and Lisa, just on following up on certain documentation, but I hear what you're saying and I appreciate what you're saying. Mr. Young?
If I was one of those ZBA members and if I was mentioned in the investigative report as having possibly violated some ethics laws, even though it's, I read to myself it's very ambiguous and it says that these people could have disclosure issues, disclosure issues, if they, if they are found to be serious enough, can be, can be violation of the ethics laws. But the investigator... But the investigator cannot make the statement that, yes, this guy is, sorry, that he's guilty. Only the Ethics Commission, or voted the Ethics Commission in Boston, can decide whether there is guilt or innocence to the ethics laws. I think everybody knows that. So, if, if I was mentioned in that, I would welcome a hearing. And, and I knew I was innocent, give, give me the hearing. Vote, vote to have a hearing. Let these people come before the board and, and have their hearing, and then they can, then they can speak. And if that was me, I'd be here, say, "Give me my hearing. I want it right now, or as soon as you can give it to me."
Okay.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
Miss, 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 may I add, so, there are board members, I am no longer a board member at this time, and like we talked about earlier, and that's why I just want to, so, I'm not held with the same skin that they are as far as the hearing is concerned. You are not holding a hearing on me.
We're not holding, no, no, we can't.
We can't, because I'm not a-
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm at this point a citizen, there's looking to be reappointed to the ZBA, and for those purposes, I'm an informed adult, and I would like to clear any ambiguity that's in here in, in reference to me.
Now, I understand, Mr. Cushing, but, but I, uh, just, um, if you can please, uh, because I, I really, everybody's been doing pretty good, actually, up to this point. I know I've just called the universe in on us, but everybody's been doing kind of good, given the pent-up energy around this. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're being respectful to each other. Heard what you said, I, that's what you said to us the last time. Um, and we, and, as I said, when we get to your appointment, more than glad to have you within the confines of what we can discuss tonight, because it's not a hearing, and we're not going to be calling witnesses, and all this other kind of stuff. Um, more than glad to have you, uh-
I run to the restroom, I don't need to-
State your position.
Yes.
But, you know, we, we can't have a hearing for you tonight. Um, I'm more than glad, if you want to pursue something else, I will be more than glad to talk to our legal counsel and find out if there is a venue, an avenue, some way for us to have a conversation beyond what, what I've indicated tonight. And I, I understand, because I'd probably feel the same way if I were you. So, I get that. Mr. Young?
I just want to, well, thank, if you're tuning in, your colleague doesn't know the specifics of the conflict of interest law as written by the Ethics Commission. You can go online and just type in Ethics Commission Guide to the, Guide to the Conflict of Interest Law. And you can, you can call up, there's a whole issue on disclosures. Some of them, some disclosures, not following a disclosure can be very serious, some, some of, some of them aren't serious, okay? So you can read all about the disclosure issues. They will give you examples of certain, when certain disclosures should or shouldn't be made, and you can just go online and, and type in, Ethics Commission Guide to the, to the, uh, Conflict of Interest Law, it'll tell you all about it.
Yeah.
If you, if you want to read it.
I read all that, with all that training.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Um, and I, I think one of the recommendations, um, for anybody who potentially had conflict of interest issues, um, one of the recommendations was by Mr. Lampke that people kind of take stock and figure out, um, you know, is there something I should disclose? And, um, you can always call Ethics. If there's something kind of weird or funky, or you're wondering, like, should I file a disclosure on this? I don't even know. Um, they've got a person of the day, they are pretty good about answering the question, like, right on the spot sometimes, and then they'll send you an email, like, immediately after. At least, I've found them to be responsive. Um, so you might want to think about that. Okay, so, um, I've got a motion and a second on the floor to, um, investigate Mr., um-
Yeah, like, possibly, um, make an amendment to the motion, because it looks like we're, and counsel should be here. Um, don't know why she's not, where, we knew this was going to happen tonight. But I would like to make an amendment to Mr. Weeks' motion that if later on this evening, um, Mr. Cushing gets appointed, that we have, uh, an immediate, not immediate, but a hearing, on Mr. Cushing, along with the other members that the investigation said to do a hearing.
Does anybody, uh, does anybody want to second that amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, um, okay, so, um, and Ms. McDowell, have you got that motion down? Okay, great. Alright, so we've got a motion, um, that's, uh, made and seconded. Um, any further discussion by the board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, great. Okay, um, so that's, um, going to conclude our conversation about the general discussion. I would anticipate we will have this on our agenda again in the future to talk about, um, the recommendations, which were plentiful. Um, and it did include some of the things we talked about earlier in the evening, um, about training, um, and then, um, you know, perhaps updating our applications so that we're asking a few more questions, um, of people when they're applying. Um, and then, um, you know, there's, there's quite a few things. Anyway, it's page 64 of 65. It's rounding the bend, and it's the final one or two pages. Um, okay, so, uh, we're going to move on, uh, to appointments, which is sadly only item number two on our agenda. Um, okay, so, um, we have got appoint associate member and member to ZBA to fill current vacancies. Um, and we have got, um, the member vacancy for a three-year term. We have two applicants, William Cushing and Michael Fleming. And is Mr. Fleming here tonight?
Right here.
Oh, okay, alright. Um, okay, um, so first up, we've got Mr. Cushing. Mr. Cushing, we've gone over the rules of engagement. I'm really hoping you can stick with them. Um, so if you want to pop up there, and we'll take it from there.
Alright. So, if any, if the public doesn't know, my name is William Cushing, resident of Hanson. I was on the board prior to, three weeks ago, or a month ago. Um, in that investigation, Mr. Lampke did not discuss in his recommendations, any removal of board members at that time, but at that point in time, I had thought pertaining to our general bylaws that, as they're written, they didn't allow for a temporary term. Um, so I resigned, um, waiting for this investigation to be complete. And at that point in time, I thought, um, that there shouldn't be any issues, and I would like to be appointed for a full term. Um, I went over my background briefly last time. I will do it again really quick for anybody in the public or anybody here that was not there. I specialize in permitting. Um, when I got appointed to the ZBA in 2015, I had disclosed to the board at that time, I was a builder and developer. I thought that I could offer something to the board, um, as far as being on the other side of the table, and also looking from, you know, looking from the perspective of developers coming in, and kind of seeing, you know, from the talent's perspective and from the, uh, the applicant's perspective. Um, I am well-versed in zoning. I am well-versed in planning. I am well-versed in stormwater management. I am well-versed in conservation, water health, all permitting aspects. I always looked at it that I was an attribute to the town of Hanson, and every decision I made was based on face value. I hate to say the I-word, but if you go back to the investig, investigation, there's one thing that he did point out, there were no wrongdoing in regards to any decision the ZBA made while I was serving the ZBA. I also want to clarify, one of the biggest things, and not to get into this, but only I think I should touch on it, because 99% of the complaints stem from Spring Street, which I had an interest in on a comprehensive permit, and that's where this all transpired. The citizens petition, um, that transpired into 130, 150 votes at town meeting. At that point in time, I don't think anybody objected to it, because I think that, in my opinion, I thought it was nonsense, but that's okay. I thought that, um, in time, things would, you know, have its due course, and the truth always prevails in the end. Um, I think through this investigation, as you see, that yes, I did serve in the zoning board. Yes, I did have an interest, for the record, on that comprehensive permit. Yes, I did everything to the letter of the law that I should have as a taxpaying resident of the town of Hanson. I can, not to get into dollar values, but in the, uh, I can tell you that, that, that property has generated in the past few years in excess of $50,000 in real estate taxes. And I only allude to that because it's, you know, you, you talk about a silent partner taxes, right? So, there's only silent partner in this whole thing is the taxes, which is, you know, sadly, the town of Hanson. But, you know, back to quid pro quos, there were none. Back to residency, I am a resident. Back to any Section 19 violations pertaining to 268A, which is the chapter in which we look at all this. There's, there's, there's 19, there's 23. 23 is subjective, and there is no litmus test. In other words, there's no boxes that checked. Section 19, very clear, right? Did, boom, boom, you know, did you do this, did you do that? And if there is an issue with Section 19, then you have a Section 19 violation. I can tell you, me, I had no Section 19 violations. The residency, uh, question in regards to the investigation was pertaining to me. My residency was, um, my domicile, as he called it, was Hanson. And, um, what he said is, pertaining to me, that there may have been a Section 23 disclosure that I did not file, or he could only, uh, review what he had. Um, he can't review what he doesn't have. So, um, in regards to that, I, he doesn't say it was required. He say it was, he says it was subject, subject, suggested. And understanding that, Section 23 is not about right or wrong. It's how you perceive Section 23. And that's the entire thing about this investigation, that there were no Section 19, I'm sorry, alright. So, in regards to me, in Section 23, in regards to me, um, I had no Section 19 violations or no quid pro quos, which would be you do for me, I do for you.
So, Mr. Cushing, uh, can we put a little bow on?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap it up in one minute.
I've given you a pretty fair amount of latitude.
Yeah, thank you so much for having the chair.
Okay.
Um, so, that being said, I hope you guys, you know, reviewed the investigation. Again, as far as my, um, qualifications, again, I have a bachelor's degree. I, um, since I graduated from college, I've only been in the real estate business. I disclosed that when I got in the ZBA in 2015. It was never a hidden secret. And, um, I hope you consider me to be reappointed tonight, and I hope that, uh, and again, I'm, the motion that you made in regards to, if you do reappoint, I'm fully, if you have any further questions in regards to anything, I am more than happy to have a hearing as soon as you guys decide to have that hearing. And I, any questions you want to have, please fire away. I will be, you know, I will be here to answer any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Fleming? Um, if you don't mind stepping up and, and just telling us where you live, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Uh, my name is Mike Fleming. I live at 1282 Whitman Street, um, on 58. Um, I've been a, I've lived at that residence for 15 years. I've lived in Hanson since '74. Uh, moved out once, came back. Really like this town, I've always been involved. Uh, been on the AgCon committee. Uh, been heavily involved in youth football. Mr. Hickey knows me. Actually, there's a few more people in here that I thought would, I was surprised that I knew more people in here than I do. I was asked about two weeks ago to sign up for the board. I was not fully aware of all the stuff that was going on, so I don't know any real details about that. I'm an upstanding person in the city, in the town, and, um, I'd like to get my feet wet and get into some of the town stuff, and I think this is a pretty good place to get started. It's kind of low on the totem pole in some respects of the town business. Um, so I don't, don't have much more to say other than that, than I'd like to see the best for the town and be involved.
Okay. Uh, did anybody, I mean, we didn't ask, have anybody ask questions, Mr. Cushing, but, um, we had, you, you don't know this, but at our, I don't know, a couple meetings ago, or our last meeting, um, Mr. Cushing had already gotten up, and so people had asked some questions there. So, if you don't mind, um, you know, just open it up to the board, see if anybody has any questions.
I'll let Joe ask his usual question.
Come on, Joe.
Typical question is, do you have any disclosures that we need to be aware of?
Any what?
Any disclosures that we need to be aware of?
No, I'm a production mechanic. I work up in Boston for a liquor company. I'm not involved in real estate or construction or anything like that, um, so I don't really have any, conflicts of interest in that respect.
Okay, any other questions?
Mike, we go back a long way with football. Do you know any other members of the board?
I do know Ann Rain. Um, I'm not familiar, yeah, from the icon. Um, other than seeing him on TV, Laura, um, I don't know the other two.
The one thing I wanted to ask you, Mike, is because you, you stated that, um, you were asked to fill out an application-
Yes.
-a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
Who asked you?
Um, Paul.
Oh, okay, thanks.
And, 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 Mr. Hickey, I do want to mention this, because, um, we're going down this path again. At our last meeting, when we had, um, a gentleman, um, here, there was a, um, cross-examination of somebody who was a, just an average guy who had applied to be on the ZBA, and there were innuendos that somehow, uh, because Mrs. Rain-
Now, the chair, you don't want to go there, so you may want to stop what you're saying.
No, no, I, I-
I'll go there, I'll go there.
No, no.
I'll go there. I knew Chuck from beekeeping. That's it.
Okay.
There was no conflict there whatsoever.
But I want to be clear, I want to be clear.
And he was grilled, and I didn't appreciate that at all.
He was grilled? I asked him the same question I asked Fleming.
He said it much more friendly.
Excuse me, excuse me, the point I was making is that it is not a conflict for an applicant for ZBA-
Absolutely not.
-to know somebody on this board.
No.
It is not a conflict for them to be friends with somebody on the board. It is not a conflict for them to hold political signs-
It's not a conflict for him to be asked by someone on the board to fill out an application. It's not.
Nobody, nobody asked him to do that.
The implication is there. Why'd you ask?
You're kidding me, right?
Why'd you ask? You did it again. I don't understand why.
Joe asked his question about disclosures to everyone that came up. The last time we had someone come up, I asked the same question. I'm not allowed to ask the question.
I have, I do have something to say. I also know Mr. Ellis. I know Mr. Young. Um, I know Mr. Clemmons.
Mr. Fleming, you do not need to disclose everybody's-
Okay, I'm just saying, there's no one person that makes anything different here for me.
That is, that is not, there's, there's not going to be a pop quiz later.
Okay. I'm just saying there's no reason to be concerned about who I know.
And I apologize because you were here while we did it. So, um, I, I ju- I did get several comments from people, um, honestly calling me out, saying that I should have called in and reined in, um, any discussion and cross-examination of a person who applied at our last meeting. So I'm not going to make that mistake twice. Um, I try to take feedback and if I can work on it, I do. Um, and it is not our intention to make anybody who is applying for a volunteer position in town, um, particularly for the first time, um, to feel as though you're not welcomed. Um, that, that, so I'm, I'm sorry if there was, you know, any kind of thing there.
Mike, if I offended you, I am sorry. But I'm just trying to be transparent, like the board has mentioned more than once tonight.
And Mr. Hill, I hesitate to ask, but did you have any questions?
I, I do not.
Okay. Um, I do not have any, uh, questions for you. Um, so, um, with, uh, I, so I think we're all set. Um, Mr. Cushing.
Um, yeah, no, I just wanted to say that pertaining to that, that's the ambiguity in litmus test that I'm talking about about Section 23. And I think that it's relevant for Mr. Hickey to ask that question. Because if you look at Section 23 of 268A, Section 23, that's what it talks about. It's like, um, did you, you know what I mean? It, it goes into these little things and it's over the ambiguity.
It does not go into whether somebody held political signs for somebody, Mr. Cushing.
No, and, and that would be-
And that was the rabbit hole we went down at that meeting. Okay? And it does not go into, you know, where were you on the night of January 4th at 4:00 AM? You know, like, it doesn't get into that level of detail. And what I'm trying to establish here, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, what I'm trying to establish is that neutral questions about an applicant's abilities are certainly welcomed. And certainly, given what we've just discussed tonight at the beginning of the meeting, we are going to want to know whether somebody thinks they've got any potential conflicts. Um, but when we start getting into, you know, do you know any member of this, that, that's getting into some really strange territory. Um, it doesn't, I, you know, I don't know, I don't know Mr. Fleming. I don't know the other gentleman who's applied. But Ms. Rain know, but does this make Mrs. Rain a bad person? Is she somehow plotting maniacally to take over the world because she's got people that she knows that are applying for the ZBA? I mean, you know.
So, 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 listen, I, I, so, listen, I, I, I agree. And alls I'm saying is, it just, you would, I would like to know, right, if I was in the public here, does this applicant have a relationship with anybody in the select board? Because I've served on the ZBA for eight years. No, sorry, cap, please. I've served on the ZBA for eight years. I'm just giving you disrespect right now, thank you. That I've been a volunteer. I've been investigated over the past year. And if you're looking at investigation, what they've found on me that I maybe should have filed disclosure saying Sean Buffy was my cousin, cousin, I mean, think about it, I've been scrutinized.
Mr. Cushing, Mr. Cushing, Mr. Cushing.
I apologize. I'm frustrated as you know.
And, and I know you are. I really do, sir. And I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from. And I've tried to give you as much latitude tonight as possible. I've probably gone a little over the edge.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so, that said, Mr. Fleming, I think we're all set with you.
Okay.
If you don't mind, um, having a seat, that would be great. Um, so we have two applicants here.
I, I just wanted to ask them one question, if I could, before you dismissed it. Um, I just wanted to know, his qualifications are AgCon and youth football, okay? Does he have any knowledge in zoning regulations? That's all I want to know. I mean, going forward.
Mr. Fleming?
That's what I want to know.
Okay, you know what?
I don't have specifics, but I've been told there's courses that I can take to-
Yes, there are.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I appreciate you, um, the protocol, Mrs. Streich, I appreciate that. Um, okay, um, so, um, with that said, we have two applicants and I will entertain a motion to appoint one of them to the three-year, um, member vacancy.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to nominate William Cushing, uh, as a full member of the zoning board, um, with the stipulation that if he does get on, that he would go through the hearing process.
I, I, I mean, um, I hear your motion. I don't know that that second part is needed because we already made that motion. But, but it's fine. Not a bit of a caution, if you want to do it, it's fine. Um, do I hear a second?
I'll, is this, we're voting on who is going to be?
Yes.
I don't, I'm, I'm having a very hard time. I, I don't know if there needs to be more discussion between us before we do. I'm not sure.
Um, I, I mean, we've-
I don't know. Okay, I'm, I-
Um, okay, so, um, does anybody want to second that motion? Okay, then the motion does not carry. Um, I will entertain a motion.
I move to defy Michael Fleming.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, if I could, real quick.
Mr. Prati?
So, when I submitted my application for, um, you know, becoming a member of the zoning board again, um, it states on it permanent and alternate member. Uh, I'd just like to know why I wasn't considered for the permanent position.
Um, I don't know that we, that we knew that you were, um, applying for that position as well. Um, Mrs. Green, did you have anything on that?
Me?
No, Mrs. Green.
Me, Green.
Yeah.
I, I have the stamps, I'm going to get them stamped by the-
No, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. Okay, I think you put permanent versus permanent slash alternate. So it's probably a term of art situation where, uh, we call it, well, it's gone back and forth, but, um, full member is one. And then alternate is the other position. So I think probably the way that that was read was that you were applying for the permanent alternate position. In other words, you, you'd be the alternate.
There's only a permanent and alternate. There's no-
See, you guys refer, refer to it as permanent, but we don't think of the alternates as not permanent.
And they also say associate, right?
Yes, associate alternate.
So that's why there's the ambiguity there also, so.
Okay, so, that's okay. We, we, we haven't finished. Um, so if you, if it is your intention that you want to apply for the full position, um, then please come up and let us know about yourself and, um, we'll take you in, into consideration in the mix.
All right, I appreciate that. Um, Josh Prati, 1489 Main Street, um.
And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Prati.
Yes.
And we're just going to have you speak once.
Oh, that, that's fine. That's fine. I have no problem with that. I don't really want to come up here twice anyways.
Okay.
So, um, so as I'm sure you're aware, I've, you know, I served on the board for, uh, for roughly two years prior to tonight. Um, and, uh, in that time, it's, it was a learning curve. Um, at, if you could refer to the, uh, the investigation, um, the investigator found that there was no wrongdoing on my part whatsoever. Um, so I guess I'll just list through my, my accolades, um, and why I would be a good choice. Um, I am a licensed construction supervisor and home improvement contractor. Um, I've been doing that for a long time. Um, I do have a Bachelor's of Science in electromechan- electromechanical engineering. Um, graduated at a bad time for that job market and ended up back in the trades. Um, I do work in construction still. I do a lot of different things within the construction trades. I do, um, residential building design, which is comparable to architecture, um, without the extra zero. Um, so, um, within that, uh, I work within the zoning bylaws, uh, quite a bit, uh, understanding, uh, what you can and cannot do in certain areas of certain towns. Um, you know, it's sizing requirements, things of that nature. Um, I'm also in heavy equipment operations. Um, I do septic sys- septic system installation, excuse me. Um, and I'm very familiar with Title V regulations. Because of that, um, I've done a lot of stormwater management installation, um, including underground sewage systems, detention basins, and other drainage systems, including roof drains, um, all of which come into play in comprehensive permits specifically. Um, I've also done roadwork, same idea, utility installations, um, stormwater management. I've worked with engineers, um, in the field. I don't really know how you can be more, you know, uh,
Qualified.
More qualified for this position. So, um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, and thank you for, uh, allowing me-
I don't have any questions for you.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
The only question I have is what I was going to ask, um, Mr. Cushing during the process is, you know, why, is, um, why did you resign?
Why did I resign?
Yeah, because that, for me, you know, when, when we're appointing people to different, different committees and things, we're looking for an extension of the representation of a board. Uh, we're looking for people to do this in the best interest of the town. And you guys all know about what can happen if you don't have to quorum for ZBA, what that can do to the town in terms of fiscal, uh, fiscal issues, construction issues, projects that need votes, things like that. And it was coincidence. You couldn't have known because after the resignations came in, the, the investigation report came in. But one of the things that's been bugging me, that I've been waiting for this opportunity to ask you both, is why did you resign?
Why did I resign? Um, mainly frustration.
Mm-huh.
Um, I feel like we were, uh, considered guilty before, um, the investigation results were in. And I was sick of being strung along, getting temporary appointment after temporary reappointment, which I'm not even sure is legal.
It is. We've checked with legal counsel.
Okay, all right. Um, and, um, I, I, I had a moment of weakness and I was just sick of it. And, and that was that. Um, my application went in the following day.
And, and I think you, you will recall, I believe, Mr. Prati, um, immediately, um, regretted doing that. And I think even as we were still in the meeting, I believe, I, I don't, I'm not sure 100% on that, but I think you sent us a-
I, I did send an email, um, stating that it was somewhat of a miscommunication. Um, and that I, I, I didn't want to resign from the position, but I didn't want the temporary reappointment because I didn't think that it was right. And that, that was me standing up.
And that's, and that's, and I get it. I completely get it. From, and I really sympathize with every single person on this. And you've heard me say it publicly a thousand times, that this investigation took way too long. It was absolutely, uh, vague and we were kept in the dock the entire time. But the issue is that at the end of the day, we're responsible for everything that happens in this town to make sure that the citizens are protected. We've been doing a really good job, from my opinion, about, uh, not raising taxes, but still keeping services in, in, ongoing and making sure that the budget's balanced every year despite inflation costs and all these other things happening.
And I appreciate that.
You know, you gotta, you, honestly, I, I feel like, you know, the folks there have been doing a pretty good job. But what, what gets me is, um, it's just, we have a lot of people that don't know what happens if a three-person board all of a sudden just walks out. Uh, I don't think a lot of people in this room know that the resignations that have occurred, uh, from the ZBA could have had catastrophic fiscal issues and financial issues that we would take years to overcome, years to overcome. Uh, projects would have been just rubber stamped. Uh, there would have been no regulations. And it would have cost all of you millions of dollars potentially, uh, because people resigned too quick. And I can tell you this, we wanted it to end fast. We were trying to get the answers. And I was really enthusiastic because I was like, okay, this is great. Because I got two people on this committee right now that I'm empathizing with, that were trying to rush this through. And then I was so shocked because of the way that everybody handled themselves. I was honestly pretty impressed. I remember, you know, talking about that, with how, how well you guys were doing. And then, and then the resignations came in and I was thinking, okay, well now, now we're feeling handcuffed. So I've been really racking my brain because I like you as a board member, I like you as a person. But I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the idea that if we're putting somebody in place in a, in, in this type of position, they have to be representative of the town and have to put the best interest of the town first. And I'm struggling with it. I'm struggling with it. I am.
Okay.
I can appreciate that position.
Mr. Weems, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, wish that had come up during the investigation part of our discussion, um, but, um-
Well, it's pertinent to the consistency of appointing somebody to make sure they're going to be there.
I get that.
Well, can I speak to, to that last point, uh, if, if you don't mind? Um, so as an associate member for the previous two years, um, I believe I was at every meeting except for one.
Yes, you were.
Um, which is not typical of an associate member. It's usually you show up when somebody else can't be there. Um, and I think it speaks to my willingness and desire to serve the community. Um, I showed up when I wasn't needed to make sure that I had the correct understanding as to what was going on. Um, so that in the event of, say, uh, a continuance and on the second or third time that we're meeting with a case, uh, one of the members can't be there. At least I can make an informed decision.
Appreciate that. Um, Mr. Cushing, do you have something on the point?
I was going to add to what, I was only going to say, you know, when you, when you said that it was a great point. He was always there and, uh, he wasn't an associate member.
Mr. Young?
I'm sure, Mr. Prati, you're very, very qualified. I've heard, I've heard what you said and I'm sure you're very qualified for the position. But I want to remind the board that they, they're working off an agenda tonight. It's, it's been posted and the public's been giving, giving notice on what's on the agenda.
Yes.
And unfortunately, this person, this, this particular individual is not on the agenda for being interviewed, let me finish, for being interviewed for the permanent position. But you could have changed that.
No, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Young.
About, about 10 to 20 minutes before the meeting.
Mr. Young, we just, we just, we just found out. So that is something the chair could not have anticipated.
You don't do that, I don't think.
That, that the chair could not have anticipated that Mr. Prati would, would, had put in for, for a full position.
I'm just telling you, I've never seen this guy before.
Okay, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate, I appreciate your feedback, Mr. Young.
He's not on the agenda for applying and being interviewed and a vote taken of the-
He, he is, however, on the agenda for the, um,
Yes.
whatever we're calling it, associate alternate. I don't know.
He's not on the agenda for the permanent position. My question, Billy Yeller.
Okay, Mr. Young, thank you. Um, okay, um, thank you, Mr. Prati.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess with that, we might as well also have Mr. Costello, if he, I don't even, Mr. Costello, if you don't mind stepping up and telling us a bit about yourself. And, um, you have applied for the-
The alternate.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so, I mean, I've been resident of Hanson for 15 years. Uh, I've worked in construction or heavy civil construction for the past 25. Uh, I hold a degree in construction management from, uh, Wentworth. Uh, I am currently employed as a project manager with MBTA. So I oversee all their new, uh, capital construction projects. So I've got experience working with designers, contractors, municipalities. Um, so, I mean, I think I'd make a, a good fit, uh, for the ZBA.
Okay, and did everybody, anybody have any questions for Mr. Costello?
Universal disclosure question. Do you have any disclosures that we need to be aware of or anything that would be pertinent for us to know?
Nope.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Hickey?
I'm going to ask this in a, in a nice way. Mr. Costello, do you know any members of the board by any chance?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Hill, anything? Mrs. Rain? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the public. This is a, my, my question for the public is, um, were you, um, part of the Facebook page investigating the ZBA?
No, 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 no. Mr. Costello, this, I'm sorry, Mr. Cushing, we are not, we are not asking. Let me, it's, it's interesting because I had, I had this conversation, um, with somebody on the board recently. Um, a prior select board, um, used to comb Facebook, um, looking for what people put on Facebook about the select board or about committees or about the town. And if somebody put something negative on there, they were not appointed to a board or, 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 you know, or a committee.
It was one person.
Well, it was one person, but they were a very strong voice, Mr. Young. Um, and it wasn't you, so I, yeah. But they, they were a very strong voice. And I remember at the time, sitting in the audience, because I have that swanky life that I have on a Tuesday night watching selectmen's meeting when I wasn't a selectman. And I remember thinking, that's about as close to, um, preventing somebody from having a, a right to free speech as you possibly could get. And I really felt uncomfortable with it because I thought, you know what? People can say they don't, you know, that they don't agree with what the select board's doing. Now, if somebody was like, I'm out to get the select board, I'm going to go after them for every single thing, that's maybe a little bit of a different thing. Like if you're the appointing authority, probably don't want somebody super hostile towards the board that you're going to appoint. But as far as whether somebody's on a Facebook group or exercising their freedom of, of, of free speech or whoever they vote for, I'm not going to sign up for monitoring that. I don't, that is not, that is not the town that I live in, that is not the board I want to sit on. I don't want to restrict people. So you do not need to answer that question, Mr. Costello. And I'm sorry, Mr. Cushing, but you stepped over the line on that one.
I'm sorry if I misspoke, Madam Chair, but I, uh, he was, he was notified as a director of the board of the comprehensive permit with stem, with stem the entire investigation for the ZBA and the article that came in front. So I know Mr. Cohen was the, uh, ringleader, which is also a permanent member.
Well, Mr. Cushing, no, Mr. Cushing, we're not going to talk about people calling them ringleaders. That is disparaging. Okay, we're not, we're not, we're not going to do that. Yes, sir, if you, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, did you have a question for Mr. Costello?
Just have a comment in general.
Okay.
Chad Tobias, 519 Main Street. I think it's kind of ironic that we have an individual trying to get back on a board who doesn't follow what boards are asking them to do as assistants. I don't think, I don't think it's a very good example. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tobias. I'm not, I'm, I'm afraid to ask you for clarification, so I'm just gonna-
No, I, I mean-
Because I feel like if I do, we're going to go down some primrose.
You've tried to give guidance many times and that guidance hasn't been followed.
Okay.
Now, an individual who would be running a board or beyond the board, and I know he has in the past, you'd think he'd know better how to follow the rules and follow the guidance.
Okay. Okay.
What, what does the ring chat, you would hear about?
Okay, Mr. Cushing, we're not, well, excuse me, can I introduce myself? I'm the chair of the meeting, and all comments need to come through me and be recognized through me, and I try, I've given a lot of latitude here, and most, most people have been okay with it. Mr. Cushing, you got to simmer down over there.
I already know I'm not getting reappointed, that's okay.
You don't know anything, we haven't taken a vote, sir.
I saw the vote, there was no second, I know I'm not getting reappointed, so I'm voicing my concerns as a citizen, and these are both residents of Spring Street, the director of the Congress as a permanent, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, Mr. Cushing, and I would, I hear what you're saying, we are not posted to talk about that, and they are, regardless of where they live, if it's within the town of Hanson and they're a resident, they are able to apply for this position.
I agree.
And I don't care whether they live on Spring Street, or Whitman Street, or High Street, or fill in the blank, it doesn't matter. So, okay, Mr. Costello, we're sufficiently, yes, we're good with you?
Can I get a point of order?
Yes, please.
We had a motion to appoint, and it was seconded, and then we went on, are we going to do the vote?
We had a motion to appoint, okay, so the motion to appoint Mr. Cushing failed, and then we had moved on to the motion to appoint Mr. Fleming.
And we had a seconded.
And we had a second, and then Mr. Prati let us know that it was his intention to apply. So, given that Mr. Prati had an intention, and taking into consideration which, what Mr. Young said, but again, we did not, we could not have reasonably anticipated that Mr. Prati had in fact intended to put in for the other position. I want to see if, if anybody, do you want to revisit, I can't even remember who made the original motion to appoint Mr. Fleming, who did that, and who seconded it?
Ed.
Does anybody want to revisit that motion, which is a ball and play?
I think we have to take the, take the vote.
Okay. Put it a different way. Okay, but we'll see it all the way through.
Can I just say?
Yes.
The reason I moved is because I want a clean slate. There's been too, this has gone on for too long, I understand that some people might be more qualified or less qualified, et cetera, but I think at this point in time, we need a clean slate, a cleaner slate than what we have right now. I'm sorry, but that's, that's just how I feel about it, and I'm a new person too, I'm new to all of this, I was not in on any of the other stuff. I'm just seeing that this is not going to go well unless we have a clean slate, and then we can see what happens with that, that's just why I did that.
Okay, all right.
My question's usually for the court.
No, no, I'm just trying, I'm literally trying to remind myself of where I am right now, in the order of things, because we've covered a lot of ground, but yes, Mr. Buckley.
I'm curious, if she prefers a clean slate, would you prefer I not be on the board as well then?
Mr. Buck...
You're not in consideration, I really haven't even looked into it.
Mr. Buckley, I understand why you're asking it, and I understand that you're frustrated, and I get it, but, but we voted to have a hearing for you and Mr. Perkins, and that's, that's when I think that conversation would probably be the most applicable. Mr. Prati.
I'd just like to address Ms. Rain's concern, and I get where you're coming from. But we had a year-long investigation that said that my slate is clean, so I...
The slate is already clean.
Okay, please, Mr. Lundgren, I would ask that you do not be yelling from the audience, I appreciate your passion, I really do, and I appreciate where you're coming from. Okay, we, we, so, we have a motion and a second to appoint Michael Fleming as the full member, or permanent, or whatever the heck we're calling them, since these terms seem to be being used interchangeably, to a three-year term on the zoning board of appeals. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And nobody's abstaining, okay. All right. Mr. Fleming, thank you for applying, make sure that you, Mrs. Green and Ms. McDowell will get you a letter of appointment, make sure you get sworn in. My understanding is the next ZBA meeting is November 15th, so we want to make sure that you've done everything you need to do to get sworn in by that time. Okay, thank you. All right, now we are moving on to the associate, aka alternate, position for which we are to consider Mr. Prati and Mr. Costello. I will entertain a motion.
Not with my...
No, no, no.
You have to make a move, you got to pick a lane, you got to pick a lane.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm entertaining a motion, or I'm trying to entertain a motion. Nobody wants to move to appoint either of these individuals?
That's what they're trying to force, I mean, to be the bad guy both times. Okay, how about a move? I moved, and we have Christopher Costello.
Yeah, you should have voted before we started.
Huh? Mr. Cushing, you're out of order.
See ya.
Okay, and was there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion to appoint Christopher Costello and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, Mr. Costello, where are you? Thank you for applying, and what I said to Mr. Fleming applies to you as well, sir, so if you could just wait for the letter of appointment. Okay, all right, and that concludes our discussion for tonight about the ZBA investigation and the filling of the vacancies, more to come. I'm going to call recess. All right, well, thank you for joining us for the second half of our Tuesday, November 1st, select board meeting. We just finished our zoning board of appeals discussion, which was quite robust and went on a little bit longer than one might have anticipated, so we are going to take a few things out of order on our agenda. Specifically, we have got with us two esteemed members of the Plymouth County Hospital Reuse Committee, and you are a esteemed member too, but you're of the select board, so, and they're here to, regarding a name change and a land planning invoice. So I guess I will, who am I, who am I queuing it up to? You, Mr. Weeks?
Yeah, so, perfect segue, because we were just talking about this right before we came out of recess, so we could try to figure out how we want to present this in a, in a fluid way. So we have to talk about the planning and the release of funds, because that is time-sensitive, and it's funds allocated by the town that we have to pay for services already rendered, at least partially. So I would kind of want to pass that off to Don, who's the vice chair, to be able to talk about that, because he's very much in-depth with this, very knowledgeable about it. And then when we talk about the name change, I really want to defer to Mr. Clemmons, who is also the clerk, because we want to give a very small, very quick presentation, talking about the history of all the, all the things that have been accomplished throughout the timeline of this that's leading up to the need for this name change, because I think, we think it's more reflective of the work that's being done now, whilst honoring the work that people have done in the past, so...
Okay, I mean, I did not know a presentation was involved.
No, it's just, it's right there, it's just a quick thing.
And if it is literally just a...
It's a one-page...
The speed of light, because we are, you know, it's 8 o'clock, and we've got a significant number of other items.
No PowerPoints.
Okay, that, that's fine, so let's talk, who is best to talk about the invoice? Mr. Ellis?
Mr. Ellis, yeah.
So in your packet, you've got an invoice from land planning dated August 9, 2022, and the amount of $22,057. Mr. Ellis?
Oh, no, feel free, yeah. Because of the time constraints, we know all of the pandemic and things like that that's happened, there's been sicknesses with COVID, with the engineering department, it's taken, I don't want to make excuses for them, I'm not happy with it, but that's what life gives us, so this is what we have. Finally get down, I got a message from Tony, the town planner, that the land planning has probably 90% done, so whether, and I had a conversation with him to verify that the best way to approach this, because we were looking for payment, and payment, we decided it wouldn't work because of the fact that there's still engineering that needs to be completed. So we did decide, and we voted on it as a committee, to release 20, 20,000, no, all but 10,000.
Yeah.
So, like, 14,200.
All right, where's that number coming from, Mr. Ellis?
That's coming from the bill...
All right, because the bill we have is 22,000?
22,000.
Yes.
So if we deduct all but 10, then it would be 12,057?
Yeah.
I mean, Jim's our mathematician, but I think that...
Yeah, I don't have the, that good.
Oh.
It's my fault that I don't have it.
Okay. So, so you're looking for 12,057.50 to be paid. Now, can you remind me from whence this funding would come?
Yeah.
The funding, how can you...
You'll, you'll go ahead, yeah.
Yes.
Was it on the town meeting?
Through CPC?
CPC.
No, no, not CPC, it was a town, the town appropriated the money for this...
Oh, we're being told, two different things.
I think not, I think it was a CPC project for which up to $30,000 was set aside, we have, we have no intention of spending all of that right now, but just a portion of that, but town meeting did it.
Okay, what we are unanimous on is there is a source of funding that's been approved at town meeting in some way or shape or form. Okay, whether it be CPC or appropriation.
Yeah, it was for the amount of, like Phil said, 30,000 dollars, but that's for other things that need to be done after this engineering...
All right, so...
So the board took a unanimous vote to pay off, but hold back $10,000.
Okay, so that's, so you're looking for us this evening...
Yes.
To make a motion for you to release $12,057.50 to land planning to pay for this invoice, with the understanding you're holding back the remainder, and you'll come to us when that is completed?
Yes.
Okay, I will entertain that motion.
Is that a motion, so moved?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hill's making the motion, and Mrs. Rain is seconding the motion. Okay, fantastic, any further questions for Mr. Ellis on that point? Okay, all in favor? Okay, fantastic, so we've got that bit of our agenda done, and that brings us, Mr. Clemmons, to you, which is the Plymouth County Hospital Reuse Committee. Where we are, how we got here, and what's next, very nicely titled.
If you're familiar with the fastest three minutes of the year at halftime on Monday Night Football, this will be an attempt to give the fastest 20 years. The current committee is called the final Plymouth County Hospital Reuse Committee, there were at least two committees before us, hence the term final, the challenge was pondered, and we understand that. But when we were appointed, initially five members, now we're seven, around, I think, 2015, really, a lot had already been done, and what we did, we spent a part of the time going over many things that were done, there was some real accomplishments, there were some nice tries that didn't work, and many things have been proposed that didn't fly, so a lot was accomplished in the first part of what I can identify as that. Before our committee existed, four residences were sold, and recent, or residences were sold, and lately, a fifth one has been sold, so those things all went back on the tax rolls. Underground tanks and landfills were cleaned up by a previous town engineer, the land itself was subdivided, and the town planning board approved back around 2006, the divisions, three parcels, that's all registered and done, and that facilitated better planning going ahead. We all know the food pantry threw tremendous volunteer work, it was too bad, we need a food pantry, but it's wonderful that we have one, and an enormously good thing happened there, and it's still going on, that's fine. A new roof on that building and the extension building up front have been done. The Blini House, while not complete, has been significantly renovated, and that's an ongoing project. Septic system for the superintendent residence, the fifth residence has been sold, was redesigned. The organic community garden has come into being, and that's getting better every year. The old hospital itself, early on, damaged by fire, that had to be cleaned up, that was, the water tower and the water commission needs, we think that's the most important thing that happens, as far as the interest of the town goes, good communications happening there, and lots of redevelopment things were considered, and up through the first 15 years of ownership, all that happened. In our experience, from about 2015, 2016 on, what we've done is, we started building where other people had already, had already gone, and rebuilding on their shoulders. We did review lots of things that were proposed that didn't happen, and knew not to repropose them. We went to lots of outside groups, we talked to the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, different developer interests, people who thought that maybe the old building could still be saved for some purpose, a recap facility, medical, residential, et cetera. We realized, though, that there's barriers to it, there was geological and soil barriers, there's not very good soil for septic. If there were things that increased residences highly, we'd be adding costs to the taxpayer based on what we call cost of community services, fire, police, schools, et cetera. And we also knew the hospital itself was an attractive nuisance, the fire chief and police chief and others were afraid someone was going to die in that, because there were so many intrusions and vandalism and so on. And so reluctantly, in 2017, we recommended that the old hospital be demolished, we had to get the elephant out of the room in order to plan their new uses for the room, and that project was approved by town meeting, and it was accomplished on schedule and under budget, and the place was a completely different place from then on. And almost simultaneously, following that very quickly, ideas along the lines of a park had come up, because that would not increase the residential development, it wouldn't require much, if anything, in the way of septic, it would require many new entrances, it seemed to have a lot of legs, and accordingly, Conservation Commission sponsored a Conway School, which is a highly thought-of school for land state design, graduate school of the Western Private State, to brainstorm some things, which they did, and they gave us a report, and so again, Conservation Funds, we funded that report, and it inspired us to think many things. We brought to a public meeting in 2018 these and other ideas, I missed that because I was ill, but there was a lot of public input and evaluation back, and we felt there was a growing support for a town park. We have many good things in Hanson, we've got forests, we've got nice lawns out here, we've got ball fields, we've got a camp, but we don't have an actual park, and the idea was to build on the Conway School ideas, and I know presentations were made in this room and other places about that, the idea had real legs, and it's been voted probably more than once by the select board to support that planning. Since then, what we've done in the last couple of years is, we saw and have successfully obtained a $100,000 grant from the State Recreational Trails Program, DCR, to put around the perimeter, not to the limit, around the eastern edge of the property, a new trail, basically use existing roads, that's about 80% done, and people are already using it now. We also, because it's key to doing anything else, we knew we had to get professional redesign of traffic flow, of parking, and how traffic would safely enter and exit the site, accommodating uses that are already happening now, water park needs to get to the, to the tower, the food pantry, patrons need to get there, community garden, people need to get there, but if you're going to have a park with people coming and going, you need to have a flow there, and so some things are drafted, redrafted, and drawn out by land planning, and that's the product that we just spoke about, that, that thing is, the product isn't completely done, but a large amount of it is done and in our hands, so we're glad to hear that being paid for. There are different elements that we have envisioned as being within the park, we think we really need a playground for children of all different ages, something that isn't, is open even if school is in session, you know, we don't want to, we want something that's there 365 days a year, weather permitting, dawn to dusk at least. We envision an amphitheater for outdoor performances of any number of different types, we envision lawns and play areas for informal activities, not necessarily organized sports, but places where people can go play crispy with the grandchildren and many number of things. A trail system where people who, most of us don't have sidewalks in front of our house, we have to dodge traffic or go to some other town, we have to walk, as our cardiologists or others suggest, we want there to be trails and guidance there to use the almost level area where the hospital used to be, and some beautiful trees, ways to be rediscovered among the junk vegetation. We're at the point now where those spaces, those resource areas, even including an existing septic system from the last hospital iteration when it was operating, and a 300-foot deep well that has good... a 300-foot deep well that has good water, irrigation, those things are all there waiting to be, uh, utilized. We think, and think, uh, that it's time to, since other ideas have come and gone, focus on the park idea, and the committee has spent the last two-plus years just talking about the park.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and a name change, we think, would help us focus on that goal and reaccelerate. As we have reorganized and had some turnover in the membership of the committee, and as we've all come off under the COVID coma, as I call it, uh, we would like to, in an efficient way, utilize all the research and good work that's been done and the input from the public that we've done, and bring a park into existence, in which would include applying for more grants, but we need to have a shorter, more accurate name to be able to put in our grant applications.
Okay, is there drumroll? I feel like we need a drumroll there.
What's the name?
We think Park Planning Committee might work.
Well, this is just for you guys, your committee.
So, the Final Plymouth County Hospital Reuse Committee.
Right. Park Planning.
First of all, the hospital's gone.
No, that's true, but I just, are you somehow, are people going to blame you for every park failing that we have in town? I don't know, I'm just questioning.
We've talked about this throughout the...
If you label it High Street Park.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
That's all passion. Like you said, if people would think we're now going to go all over town.
Well, and there's already so much confusion about the Recreation Commission and Parks and Fields, and now if we add a park planning, they're going to be like, what the heck do each one of these, you know?
So High Street Park Planning Committee sounds good.
Well, once it's done, then that puts a selectmen to figure out, to do the maintenance and all the other things that might need to be done and come along.
Yep. To brainstorm a little further on that, uh, we have many baseball fields.
We could just get rid of it.
And if it's called it...
Make it shorter.
We have primary court, we have tent floor, we have the, the, uh, uh, town hall lawn. Hanson doesn't have and has never had a park per se.
Right.
So whatever else you want to put onto the aggregate street, um, Hanson is no longer a rural community where everyone's backyard and inside field was the park. Those days are gone. There's houses everywhere, there's traffic everywhere. If we're going to, what we think, and what we've been told by other San Antonio communities, we need to accomplish this, or whatever the name, so that Hanson will increase the attractiveness for residents, for small businesses. Um, the president of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce said, you know, it's close enough to South Hanson and Mason that it could really enhance, uh, the attractiveness of that neighborhood, especially as new denser developments happen there.
We talk about that all the time in our Economic Development Committee, all the time.
But if, if you wish for clarity in the call of the High Street Park Committee, we didn't want it to sound exclusive, but actually it is exclusive to this particular site. But that's no mistake, it's for everyone, and it's actually for the region.
It does sound a little highfalutin, uh, the, um, High Street Park Committee.
The Long Hill Park.
Um, but, but I, and that will be the working name, but I would assume at some point, once, you know, there's a, a little bit more, um, you know, critical mass accomplished, perhaps a thought for you guys would be to have a naming contest of some sort for the park. Um, think about, you know, whether there's some, um, buddy past, you know, in the past that has been a resident that, you know, might have, might be honored to have a section or a playground, or, I think you've got a lot of opportunities up there, you know, if you've got a playground, if you've got a trail, you could have some different naming conventions for that, and it might be a good way to really involve the community, to get them naming, you know, helping you name it. But for now, I, I, does anybody wildly object to it being called the High Street, and this is our working, our working title, um, High Street Park Planning Committee? How is that any shorter than the Plymouth County Reuse Committee?
I think you're rid of like two letters, maybe.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out how that's more spanky.
Do you want to add the word "final" to the beginning?
I would vote for whatever makes a simple, typically final, um, we have, in Hanson, many, many, many people who don't even know what you mean when you say "hospital."
Yes, no.
It's like, it's like, remember the glacier we used to have?
How about High Street Park Committee? Why, why, do you want planning in there to imply that you're still planning?
I just, I like the idea of PC personally, because I go by the acronyms. For me, um, it's all about, it, it's about revitalizing the interests in this committee, quite frankly, because the idea is that the old title served its purpose, and now it's evolved into something else. And I get phone calls pretty regularly about people saying, what's happening over there? And by giving it a name, regardless of which words you use, really is going to give the committee and, uh, focus and the town an understanding of, this is where we are taking this.
I mean, does anybody wildly object to that? I, I want to support you guys, whatever you need.
I like the High Street Park Committee.
Yes, shorter. High Street Park Committee.
Sounds good.
Mrs. Ricardo.
I was going to say either High Street Park Committee or the PC Planning Committee. Do you have a Facebook page?
We don't have time to maintain a Facebook.
Um, I may be able to help you.
There you go. Thinking of a volunteer.
When we start looking for money, then you'll see it.
That's right. That's what we're really going to need to help.
The reason I say that is because I'm on Facebook and I look at a lot of the different groups out there, and I read and hear things, some are quite nice, some are not so nice. And people are, people are looking for a place like the Whitman Park.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yes. You might think about doing it before you're looking for money, just to get everybody to know about it.
Exactly, to know what's going on.
This will anchor that in.
Right.
Mr. Clemmons, did you have something you wanted to chime in with?
Um, probably several things. It's, it's, it just needs a new identity.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be happy to almost anything, it was, it was just suggested. And, uh, what we also have seen good information about in the past is there are friends groups that form around...
Definitely.
And there could be even eventually some sort of a, uh, financial mechanism whereby donations could be made, and when this park is, is, sort of, done, um, it will need ongoing management. Right now, there is not a town government entity which is responsible for park. You say ball fields maybe, but not parks. And to, I will tell you that even to apply for these grants, uh, there's, uh, there's a program, it's pronounced "parc," but it's spelled P-A-R-C, that's the acronym, I don't know what the C stands for. Uh, if you have a town entity that's going to be responsible, you can apply. We just need to make progress in those directions.
Okay, um, so I think we've, I haven't heard anybody wildly object to it being called the High Street Park Committee. Um, did anybody want to make a motion?
So make a mo...
Go, you go.
I'll, I'll make the motion to call it the High Street Park Committee.
Second.
Okay, fantastic. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, well, there we go.
Perfect. I'd just like to mention one thing, too, is when the park is there and all up and running, you're going to have to have some maintenance, and you're going to have to have a director. I had talked to Mike about it when he was here.
He had a DPW.
He was going to use the, uh, the, uh, place up on, up on High Street Camp.
Oh.
Camp Kauani director, and a director to do that, because it's going to be a lot needed when people come in to want to have something, uh, including the van stand to, you know?
No, you're right, and, and I think, hopefully you guys are going to, are some of you going to be at our strategic planning session on the 19th?
Most likely.
Okay, because I think this would be a good subject to talk about. Um, it's definitely in need across the town. Uh, we hear this all the time from the Parks and Fields guys. Uh, we hear it all the time from the senior center and the library, who have had to hire people independently to do, do it. And we love Charlie Baker, but he's only one man, he can only do so much, um, and he does an amazing amount of things, but he can't mow every lawn in town and, you know, maintain every single building we have. So, we, I think you guys are right, if we look at this holistically, um, and we start looking at Camp Kauani, then we look at the park, then we look at, you know, the various playgrounds and the, you know, fields and all that stuff, you start seeing, you know, that we need to have a better maintenance plan, not just for our, we need one for the buildings, I mean, that's obvious, um, and it has been obvious for years, but we still haven't really done anything about it. Um, and then we need something for the property. So, um, so I, I hope you guys will bring, will bring this up at the strategic planning session.
One of the things you should probably think about, too, is some of the funding that you need to run the facilities, maybe you could go out, and, and I know some people don't like this idea, but, uh, to, uh, naming rights to the park.
Yeah, you're not talking about like Craft Field or something like that?
Yeah.
I'm just joking, but, yeah, okay.
He's one of them.
Okay. He'd be one of the ones would, would be going in.
That could get you some revenue.
Definitely.
Do that. There'll also be, you know, during the summer, there'll be, uh, food trucks coming up there like they do in Hanover. There's a lot of things that could be done up there that they had added to it later on. The nuts and bolts, the layouts have to be done first, and then you could start plugging things where you want to move them.
Yeah, we see the different elements, it's blending itself, different phases, maybe very early on, go for a playground, and then beyond that, go to other things. The, uh, we, we're trying not to get overly excited about things that would require maintenance. Yes, if there's lawn, you need to mow it. If, if there's a garden, you need someone to take care of it. If there's trees, you have to prune them. But, um, we're not talking about a lot of structures.
Mm-hmm.
We're not talking about, maybe you have to have some, some lights over the park here, but we do feel that we, we want to not over-design, but maybe under-do it as we go forward and, and see what the town has both, uh, emotional desire for and a financial desire for, because there's physical maintenance, but then there's program maintenance, whether it's food trucks or, uh, anti-viral shows or a place for a parade to stop or end.
Yep.
Uh, we have a pretty good design, it's been provided by land planning for what we think is a safe, uh, um, traffic pattern, and also we're sensitive to that, if you have a certain minimum number of parking spaces, that elevates your eligibility for grants, because they know, oh, this is just a little place for the neighborhood to gather. This is something that people from other places could come to as a destination.
Well, this is great progress. I, we don't have a ton more time to dedicate to this. I'm, I'm, would it be possible to have you guys come back and give us a much more comprehensive overview of where things are at, I don't know, say like, once we get through town meeting, maybe December-ish or January?
Yeah, I was thinking if we can put ourselves on the agenda for, um, the next, the meeting after the, uh, town meeting.
The 15th is the next meeting.
If we can do that, that'd be great, because we, we have some projects that I think need to get run by the board.
Okay.
That I think are time-sensitive, and we really could get some progress moving.
Okay, I, I, Lynn and Lisa, can you just, um, you know, kind of queue that up for our 15th meeting?
No.
Okay. Um, any other quick last parting thoughts?
The Highway Department has reviewed it, and sent in a letter that they liked the setup, uh, Police Department liked the setup, uh, all the, all the departments have already reviewed it, and we have letters from the...
So, the traffic, the...
Traffic flow.
Well, I thank you guys for hanging in there. I know it's, but one of those committees that, you know, this has happened to me before, like with the Maquon reuse, you know, I thought it would be a year. I mean, how long could this take? A year, baby? And here we are, five years later. Uh, so I, I know that was a similar thing, and I appreciate you guys hanging in there and lending your individual expertise to it, because I think you both bring different disciplines, as do the rest, you know, the rest of the board, so...
It's a long road.
It has, but, you know, I think it's going to be very, very gratifying.
We have to have a minimum of 125 parking spaces, so if you look at the plan and say, wow, this is too much, but that's what the minimum is for grants.
Okay.
FYI, we already have eight new ones. There's an unpaved, and it's not intended to pave, a new parking area off Pierce Avenue, and a gate to prevent driving in further, which is the trailhead for what we're calling, you know, informally, the Long Hill Trail, built on the perimeter. It's eight tenths of a mile, and people, I saw a couple ladies that were, the babies sprawled today, uh, people are using already, you know, it's only 80% done, so check it out.
Did anybody have any quick questions?
I think you have something.
Mr. Hill? Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm sorry.
And I don't mean to rain on your parade as far as grants. Uh, the PARC is the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Grant Program. Unfortunately, it only applies to, uh, a town with 35,000 or more population.
Okay, well, I, but that said, I think, could you and Mr. DeFries, um, take a look at what other potential grants?
Absolutely.
Ms. Green and Mr. DeFries have worked some minor miracles on getting other grants. Um, so I think if everybody collectively puts their heads together, and, um, and if we prioritize in the one-stop, um, grant program, perhaps some funding for that, I think that might, you know, yeah.
We've been to several of their, of their formal presentations, and the threshold of the number of spaces could create a niche, but we are, we want to shake every tree and see what fruit falls out.
Mr. Hickey?
Uh, when this first came before us, um, there was talk about a solar field somewhere up there.
Early on, around 2015, 2016, there was a, a first, but under a previous town administrator, a lot of research went into that, and the whole solar field, solar array business is so complex. We even tried to get a consultant in to sort of shepherd the town into that sort of revenue generating thing. It was a minefield that couldn't be penetrated by, by at least the people we had at that time. Uh, and so we, and also the appetite for it and the rules and the protocol and financial things about solar, beyond our capacity, uh, and lately, we've been thinking, the highest value to the people in town might be to have some nice green space there in the middle of town, and let the solar fields go where other people are putting them, and, you know, be happy for that. The town probably has other opportunities.
We, we definitely do. Uh, Mr. Hickey, we definitely do have some town-owned properties that Mr. DeFries had referenced, and I don't think we should give up a thought about the solar fields, it is a potential revenue source for us, and God knows, we need it. Um, so, um, but, uh, yeah, I, I do remember it being brought up originally. When I think about that, it kind of makes me cringe a little bit to have it up there, you know, like I...
If I may add to it, it would really take away from the nice relaxing to see, uh, barbed wire, not a barbed wire, a Charlie fence around with, with...
Dawn.
You know, 20, you know, right in the middle of everything.
They would put trees all around it, you know that.
Oh, yeah.
That you wouldn't see a fence. It would be covered with trees.
No, you have to, that's kind of the Bible.
All right, well, thank you, guys. We appreciate it. We'll have you back on the 15th of November, um, and, um, and we appreciate it. So you got the new name, and you got the $12,057.
And the chair gives all this, right? The chair of that committee.
Yep. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Can I have a question?
Mine's all marked up, but maybe you can...
Um, okay. Mrs. Green, all right, next up on our agenda is, um, discuss ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Check here.
See you soon.
Good night.
Ms. Green? Discuss ARPA funds.
All right, now to members of the board, um, as you remember, for our special town meeting, um, we had had some articles, um, in Article Six of the warrant that were focused on capital items. Um, with the continuance of special town meeting to November 9th, um, there have been some additional articles added to Article Six, um, that's, that focus around capital improvements. And if you notice, um, number one, two, and number six, which are, number one is for library and senior center HVAC replacement, number two is a fire station feasibility study, and, or number six is Recreation Commission Stormwater Management Remediation. Funding for those three capital items is marked under ARPA.
I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Ms. Green, also number eight, I believe you have? I'm sorry, Ms. Green, also number eight, I believe you have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, and number eight, library and senior center generator. So those four projects are, we're going to work to earmark ARPA money for those four projects. They do, each of these do fall under the ARPA portal, under the umbrella for ARPA for eligible projects. And they would either fall under Health and Human Services, which an HVAC system in a senior center, library, public space definitely falls into that for Health and Human Services. Fire, fire station feasibility falls under the construction. And then library, as well as the generator definitely falls under because it provides, if they lose power either in the heat of the summer or the cold of the winter, the generator will keep both of those centers going to provide warming stations and/or cooling stations for elderly residents who might be in need or families who might be in need. So those, those fall under the ARPA portal, Health and Human Services.
And Ms. Green, as you recall, I don't know if it was at our last meeting or two meetings ago, but sometime within the last month or so, we had discussed the ARPA money and then we had discussed the opportunity to add this back in.
Right.
And strike while the iron was hot.
Yes.
And, and so this is just really Ms. Green showing us. And then I think we ought to take a vote on this, cause I had asked that we talk about it in open session. We had talked about it in pieces, but I wanted to make sure for the sake of transparency that, yes, we had talked about putting this back into the matrix, but we hadn't actually voted on the matrix. And I assume that this is consistent with what the capital improvement folks voted.
Yes, this is, this is their matrix.
Yes, okay.
This is their matrix.
All right. So I think now we've, we've recalibrated and now we are, we are one with the capital improvement committee. So.
Looks good to you.
Looks fine to me and I think Frank's watching on TV right now.
Oh, good.
He just said that he'll call in if he, if he needs us to.
No, I mean, I think, I think we're all set. Did you have any, any other color commentary that you wanted to add on this, Ms. Green?
Um, no, not, not on this one in particular.
Okay, so.
I think it's wonderful that we have that cash available, that we can actually do some really great things. And it's not going to be a burden on the taxpayer.
It is not. That said, and I agree, it is a wondrous thing that we even have this money and it's.
And we still have some left.
It has never happened in the five years. No, we have, and that's the point I was going to get to, is moving forward, although we've been able to fill some gaps that are one-time capital expenses, we know we don't want to use that money. We've been, we've been cautioned not to use that money by our town accountant, FinCom and others, to not use that ARPA money to try to fill some kind of a budget gap. It should be used strategically and I, I could see, I could foresee that it might end up becoming a little bit of a feeding frenzy where somebody comes to us for, you know, 15,000, this one for that, blah, blah, blah. And then we end up with nothing. So what I'm hoping is after we vote on this, and if everybody agrees that we want to spend the money this way, that hopefully at that strategic planning session, we can have some more conversations about how can we use that money in a meaningful way to move the needle on some things we've never been able to do before.
And we'll have all that, those numbers then?
Yes. And I, and I don't know what those things are, but I'm sure it will come up at the strategic planning. And we already heard from just this one little committee, like, hey, we've got a need for maintenance. But you know, I, I don't know, you know? So, Ms. Green, are you looking for us to vote to amend the existing? I'm not, I don't know, I'm asking, what should this vote look like? I don't even know.
Yeah, so the board would take a vote to, to place these in Article Six for the warrant for the special town meeting. And then once the board votes that, we will forward this to the finance committee, the town accountant and the town moderator to let him know that this has gone on. And then we will work to update the warrant that will be available, the informational warrant that will be available at special town meeting.
Okay, and, and to that point, one of the things we had talked about, again, want to be transparent, want to make sure people don't think anybody's pulling a fast one, that we're going to do different colored paper to call out that this is a change from that original warrant that we would have presented on October 3rd. But because we've had a few weeks in between time, we've been able to talk about things and maybe solve some problems that we wouldn't have been able to at October 3rd.
What is the column Town Admin Recommendation for? That would basically be the, you know, basically the recommendation for the select board as the administration. And then we would also have normally a column for finance committee recommendations. Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
So you're basically, you're recommending that the split for all of this funding be free cash 235, 946, and ARPA be 435?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And does that column need to be explained?
Yeah, it, it does seem a little.
It's empty.
Is that an existing column or did you kind of?
Well, this, this actually was sent to us by the Capital Improvement Committee. So what we would do is just, we would put the select board vote and then we can put this forth to the finance committee. Although I don't know if they're meeting prior to town meeting on the 9th, but we could, if they are able to meet and vote, we would put that information as well so that people could see that both the select board and the finance committee voted to either recommend or not recommend.
I think that's fine, but I agree with these guys. It is a little like, hmm, what does that mean? Okay, so with that said, I will entertain a motion to update Article Six as Ms. Green just described to us.
Sold.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I ask you a question while we're on this?
Yeah, go for it.
What happens if we don't get a quorum?
Well, no, that's a very valid question and I'll tell you why. It's a valid question on a number of different levels. Well, I was thinking about this the other day. If, and I really hope this doesn't happen, but if we don't get a quorum, there are some things that would be inconvenient, you know, that we wouldn't be able to vote on them. But the elephant in the room would be the transfer station. Because we only voted at the May town meeting to give them half of their budget. And thinking that, you know, we wanted to, as they're required under our bylaws, they are required to present a budget to us. That is one of the bylaws, all department heads are required to present a budget. We had several unsuccessful attempts at presenting a budget to us from the Board of Health. Most recently, we had a successful presentation and so we were ready to move forward and give that second half of the budget. If we do not get a quorum at town meeting and they are in the position of not getting that second half of the funding, my question for you, Ms. Green, is, and this is not ideal and I definitely, you know, but worst case scenario, are we able to fund that budget with ARPA money?
That would be a question that I would have to talk with the town accountant about and talk with Tom O'Brien, who's the Plymouth County Commissioner, the treasurer.
Okay.
I would have to talk with those folks about that.
Okay, I just ask because I don't see any other source of money we have sitting around that could.
That's one of those things we're not supposed to do.
Fund that, yeah, I get that, but my thought process.
I want it.
No, my thought process on that was it would be a one-time thing that we would get reimbursed at the May town meeting. That was what, where I was going. I should have finished that thought though, yeah.
And I wasn't even thinking of the transfer station, Laura, but because of the revenue that they have taken in already, and I talked to Todd about this, they have enough to go until June 30th. So what the problem would be for the transfer station is the May town meeting. Because they, unlike us, are already going to borrow on their income for next year. Because those stickers are a two-year, you know, situation. So to run a, to run a transfer from October to June, it's $161,000. They have $165,000, so they just make it. Problem's going to be what happens July 1st. I was more concerned about the library, the $200,000 for a possible warming station if that situation happens and, you know, it goes kaput. I talked to Todd about these three things. First, the $200,000 does not, and it's great that it's going in there and it's ARPA money, but the town doesn't have to decide.
No.
We can.
We can decide that unilaterally.
Right.
We don't want to, I mean, ideally.
Right, this is why we're doing it.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure we're prepared that if we don't get it, we know what we can do. And it's the $200,000 for the library and senior center. It's the $100,000 for the fire station and the $74,000 for the stormwater management.
And 85 for the generator.
Yes. So all that could be taken care of by the five of us if town meeting doesn't happen. I wasn't even thinking of the.
Again, worst case scenario, like, well, I think we're all committed to bringing it to town meeting and having town meeting decide that. But if we get painted into a corner where we yet again don't get a quorum, it's good to have a Plan B.
Yep.
And the Plan B won't be postponing another month. It'll be waiting until May.
Yep, yep. So many hands. Mr. Weeks and then Mrs. Capato.
So I agree with everything that Jim just said, but the more immediate issue for me is, do we have enough money to pay for plows? I mean, we could have a really bad winter. So it's one thing to wait for, for actual capital items and then being able to borrow against ourselves. I think it's a great, a great plan. Absolutely love the fact that you're thinking about that. I'm thinking about, you know, Hanson has the best streets. Put our streets up against anybody's streets.
I agree. I agree.
Do we have a contingency plan that if we don't have town meeting, we really could have a really bad winter and we'll carve into all of this money, it'll go into paying plows.
We have, I mean, I'm not, I'd be interested to see what Ms. Green says, but my initial thought would be we often run into this where we spend more than what we've allocated and at May town meeting, we have to back into it and get that funding then. So it may be a case where we get all of our funding at the May town meeting to pay for what we already incurred.
And just to echo what Laura said, Joe, since 2017, that's when Laura and I joined the board. Five out of the six years, we've gone over.
Yeah.
You saw that last year. We just go over.
No, it's true, but we go over, but it's that much more sensitive when we're not paying for literally anything else in the budget.
Yeah.
So it's not, I, I've been around, I didn't pay any attention long enough to know that we always go over what we allocate substantially. But we've always had a balanced budget and paid for things throughout the year as well. We've always readjusted our budgets, we forecasted things. Now we're talking about, we won't be able to pay for anything.
No, I mean, none of this is an ideal scenario and I really hope we didn't call the universe in on ourselves. Ms. Green, did you have a thought on that, on Mr. Weeks's question about?
So the highway department, they budget $300,000 for snow and ice removal. If they do come into a deficit spending on that, we just basically, the town administrator sends a memo to the town accountant allowing the deficit spending. And then at May town meeting, we, basically we refill that.
So we'd have a whopper of a deficit, it wouldn't be just a few dollars over.
But it's happened, it happens basically every year.
Yeah.
It's always considered.
But I also don't, and I appreciate that, that's great. I just don't, you know, there, for the 10 people that are watching that, that might talk to their two friends, that's like 30, 30, 35 people that might now show up. So the idea is, is I don't want to normalize, we can wait until May.
No, no, no.
That's why I'm saying this, I'm trying to make it a little bit more catastrophic because people need to be at town meeting to fund these things. We can't just simply say, we're going to wait until May.
Mr. Weeks?
Yeah.
Yes, please, Ms. Green.
One thing that's really, really crucial for people to come to special town meeting is that we have five town employees who are not being paid the rate they should be. Because of what stemmed back from last October town meeting, unfortunately with the departure of the administrative assistant, the wage classification by law was not updated and it was not caught this past May. So we've got about five department heads that are not being paid at the, at the rate that all the other department heads are paying on. So their salaries as well are basically back in prior to July 1. So the town meeting is crucial to get these department heads up to the level of pay all the other department heads are and it's, it's all are crucial. Basically, they're all crucial, but these folks really need to be, get their pay up to where all the other department heads are.
And those are just the top five catastrophic outcomes of us not having a town meeting. But I'm sure if we sat here and brainstormed long enough, we could come up with a few others. Mrs. Capato?
A couple of years ago, when the town meeting was on a Saturday morning at the high school, they changed the quorum because we weren't getting enough people. I think at the beginning, you know, it was like 10 o'clock, whatever time to start, probably 37 people and the quorum was changed from 100 to 50. Now, I don't remember that whole thing.
Yeah, so you can, you can, during COVID, we were able to change quorums. There was, there wasn't, yeah, it was related to the pandemic. And, and I, I'm not sure if we, I mean, we could look into changing it, but I guess it's just the Irish in me that just is stubborn about, you know, I want people to town meeting, I don't want to change the quorum number. I want to find out how to engage more people and get them to the town. Oh, so while we're talking about that, Ms. McDowell has printed out some flyers for town meeting. Wait a minute, I may have just had a little bit of an ADD moment here. Did we have a motion made and seconded to place the Article Six? And did we actually all vote on it?
Yes.
We did.
Okay, great. Then I will go down this little primrose path that I just started. So to the point of engaging more people, we have got, we had discussed as a board generally that we would try to get to Shaw's and Mr. Hill had gone to Shaw's and they pretty much said whenever we want to go down there.
Yeah, we said to let him know in advance, but I, I went there on a night and I'm like, I, cause I, I don't know when I'm going to be free. So I went there and he wasn't there and nobody said word one about it.
Where's the message board now at Shaw's because they took it down in the vestibule?
Oh, I don't know, but I, so we were going to pass out flyers, just pass out flyers like old school. And so I, and we have to do it this weekend, right? Otherwise, like basically that's it, is this weekend.
Well, I would have done it in a trick or treat.
I, that probably would have been a good, you know, give you a little candy if you, no, we can't do that. But yeah.
I'll talk to the library director about putting it on our Facebook pages.
Okay, that would be helpful.
And I think.
And then, Ms. Green, I know you had, I had asked if you could do some outreach to the schools and, and do you know if that's gone out yet or?
Yes, so the, the schools, the high school, they sent out a, an email that went to parents of the students within Hanson. They also sent the information about regarding the childcare that was available. So we, we've developed the little pamphlets. It's, it, our intern Jake actually designed it. It's really cute, says, stop, we need you. We have a board in the, by the assessor's office that again says, stop, we need you, town meeting. We have copies of the warrants there. We have the little flyer there that gives them all the information of where it is and what time it is. It's on our Facebook page.
And then you did an interview, I think, too. Did you not do, did you do an interview with the Express or am I host? I don't know.
I actually, during the car show, Whitman and Hanson Cable Access was there and I did talk with Paul regarding town meeting, how we were really disappointed that we couldn't get the quorum there and that it's re, we're continuing it until November 9th and we needed to get folks there, so that's out there.
And Mr. Hickey had suggested a half-page ad in the Express. Now, I think their deadline is Tuesday, but do you think there's any way you might be able to strong-arm a little bit and see if we could get that in there? They're going to need it all ready to go when you contact them. She might be willing to either do a stuffer or like a half, you know, obviously something very frugal.
See, I'll get in touch with them tomorrow and see what.
I mean, do you guys?
Town meeting, November 9th, that's it. You know?
It's got to come out this week. I mean, that's this week's edition.
It has to be this Thursday, so.
So you'd have to get it in like 4:00, 5:00 tomorrow morning. I'll, I'll get, I'll send it, I'll send a copy of the flyer over to them and see if they can get it in.
Yeah. So do we want to make a motion for an expenditure up to, I literally have no idea how much this is. I think it might be more than 200. In my mind, I'm thinking it might be.
$500, we have to get people there. And I mean, we're not giving out, are we giving out iPhones 16s or no?
No, but people will be able to reach under their chair to see if they have a lucky recipient.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah, make a motion, 500 bucks.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I missed that.
He seconded it.
I seconded it, Jim motion.
Yep. It was a little vague on who seconded it, it was a lot of seconding.
I was going to second, but Joe did first.
All right.
Beat it.
Okay, anything else on the ARPA funds, Ms. Green?
Well, yes, I was, I was going to actually mention this in my town administrative report, but since we're talking about ARPA funds, I'm happy to report that the IFB and invitation for bids on the McQuan elementary school demolition has finally gone live. We finished that document and it's advertised currently. There was a, some discussion about using some of the ARPA funds for, to cover the costs, some of the cost of demolishing the McQuan. That would fall under the, under the ARPA for negative economic development impact. And what that does is that allows. And what that does is that allows a municipality to, it allows them to renovate, recondition, in or demolish or reconstruct an abandoned vacant building. So the McQuan falls within that category. So based on what we have, December 1 is the deadline for bids. So December 1 is when we will open the bids. And when we use a, an IFB invitation for bids, we generally go with the lowest bid, responsible, responsive bidder. So pending references and all the bid requirements being in place, we will know by the end of December 1 how much it's going to cost us to demolish the McQuan. Then we could determine how much of the ARPA money that we might want to put through it, forward, towards it. As you can remember, there was an article approved by town meeting, I believe in 2019, to borrow a million dollars towards demolishing the McQuan, which is still, which is still standing.
Sorry. That's still there?
It is still there, yes.
Yep. I talked to Gene Solomon about that. It's still there, so.
Do we open those here on December 1? How does that?
Yes, yes.
So that's a Thursday. We would meet?
Oh, no, we don't need to be here. When I say we, we mean the royalty, meaning Lisa.
Meaning Laura.
We'll be opening it. Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on that, Mrs. Green?
Nope, that'll do it.
Okay. So that brings us to the discuss and vote to offer Medicare Freedom RX PPO plans.
All right. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. So I had attended the May Flower Municipal Health Group meeting just a little over a week ago. And during the meeting, that is the organization that provides the healthcare coverage programs for the town. And what they also provide is they provide healthcare coverage for retirees. And during the meeting, they introduced a new Medicare PPO, Blue it's called, with some new 2023 benefits. And basically, what you have in your packet is you'll have a chart that will show you basically what the current program offers, which is the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medex, medical supplement. But then you'll also see the Blue Cross Blue Shield Freedom RX PPO. So it'll just give you an idea of what the difference is in the different programs that's offered. If one day you'll see that routine dental services is now covered with a $50, sorry, with a zero copay. If it's in-network, $45 copay. If it's out of network, as prior, it was not, that service was not offered. And then if you also notice, too, there are also hearing aids. There's different, basically, there's different coverage for hearing aids where up to one pair, they can be reimbursed, or they'll have a copay of $699 or $999. Whereas prior, if you see, it was $2,000 in the prior program.
With no copay?
Well, the copay would be $2,000. Whereas the new program would be either between $699 and $999. So that's significant. And then you'll also see that it also covers something like wigs, maybe for folks who are undergoing cancer treatment. They have a, it's $500 per year allowable for that, as in the current, you know, the current program, it's not offered. So the new, the new program offers a lot of different benefits that the old program does not. The cost difference between the two is not significant. I believe it's like $38 additional for that program. So the old program, it looks like it's going, it was $382 was the rate. The new program would be $324. So it is, it is a bit less money for the program. And basically, we just need a vote from the board to offer this program as part of our benefits for our retirees.
This is just to add this as an option?
Yes, we just need a vote of the board to add this as an option to our, our benefits.
So it's not replacing it?
It's not replacing it. No, it's adding it.
So it's giving more than one option?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, but it's giving a better option for a lower price.
Set it.
Okay. All in favor? All right, fantastic.
I made a motion and seconded it.
Yep. All right. Discuss holiday schedule. Again, Ms. Green, over to you.
Yes, if the board remembers, last year, we came up against a little bit of a challenge by the way that the holidays fell on. And there was a little bit of back and forth with the unions. Well, this year, we are, we are looking at a similar question, but not as significant as last year, where we had Christmas Eve on a Friday and Christmas on a Saturday. This year, we have Christmas Eve on a Saturday, which would give our unions that have Christmas Eve off a floater. And then Christmas is on a Sunday this year. And based on what we've done in the past, which was in 2016, we closed town hall on Monday to celebrate Christmas holiday. That seems reasonable since we have done it in the past. And with the way that the holiday falls, it really wouldn't make sense for town hall to open the Sunday after Christmas, for the 26th. So my suggestion on that is that we close on Monday, the 26th, to recognize Christmas holiday.
And my question to you, Ms. Green, would be, given the situation ran into last year, how does the union feel about this proposal?
We haven't offered it yet to the union. We're going to, I'm going to let them know tomorrow. Last year, there was, the union did have some concerns regarding the holiday schedule because of how the holiday felt, because it was Friday and Saturday. But this year, where it's Saturday, under their contract, they would get a floater for Christmas, for Christmas Eve. And where Sunday is the actual holiday, it follows practice that we would close on Monday, and that's what we did in 2016.
Is that?
Which was the last time we came up with Christmas being on a Sunday.
So you feel as though because there's a precedence, there shouldn't be an issue with the union for this?
Do you know what other towns are doing with the same unions?
Most of the towns close the day after Christmas on that Monday. Yeah, the contract language states if a holiday falls either on a, like a Saturday or a Sunday, then it would, it would either be like that Friday or Saturday. However, since town hall is, we're open on Fridays, but only with department heads. So we'd look at Thursday as closing. But normally, most other, all of, most other towns, I mean, the holiday is really, is recognized on Monday. So we'd probably be the only town hall in the area that would be open on Monday.
Okay. So are you looking for us to make a motion?
Um, yes.
Okay. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? All right. We are clipping right along, and we are now on IT Assistant Intern. Again, over to you, Ms. Green.
Hi. So unfortunately, our IT director has been rather ill these past few days, and he's not able to be here. But I think I can, I can kind of relay his message that being one person trying to handle the IT needs of the entire town, not town, but all of the municipal buildings, all of the networking systems, phone systems, copiers, basically, you name it, Mr. Moberg is doing it. He's overwhelmed. He cannot keep up with the demand on his time. He finds that he needs to deal with a server that's crashed, an email server that's crashed, a phone system that has crashed. So these are really pressing issues that he needs to attend to. And these are not quick fixes. These take a lot of time to him to fix. What we're hoping the board will entertain and consider is possibly bringing on an intern. Again, we can reach out to Bridgewater State and see if they have any of their STEM students who are just in an internship. This would be non-paid right now, until maybe we could get some funding for a part-time position. But I feel that he really, he's really running ragged, haggard.
And we need to keep him. We really need to keep him.
We need to do everything we can.
He's a valued employee.
Yes, yes.
And, and we really need to keep him. So I will entertain a motion to allow Ms. Green to hire an IT Assistant Intern.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Oh, Mr.?
I just think we need to realize the idea of, I think we need to, this is just the beginning. I think he needs, he's going to need more help. We're going to.
No, this is not sustainable. This is a Band-Aid.
It still isn't sustainable.
This is a Band-Aid. Yep. I agree, Mr. Hill. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Ms. Green, all business, excuse me, vote to appoint town administrator as custodian of tax possession property under MGL Chapter 60, Section 77B, 469 Wood Street. And did you want to cue that up for us, Ms. Green?
Yes. So back on July 19 of, of 2022 of this year, we had two properties that the board authorized for auction, although one was put on hold pending some additional information that we were going to, going to look into. 69 Wood Street is finally moving forward with an auction date. Advertising is being put together as we speak. However, the board needs to appoint a custodian to basically be the care and, I'm sorry, the care, custody, and management of the auction process.
Okay.
And the motion there is, basically comes from the law.
Okay.
And once that's done, that document will be filed with the Treasury, will be recorded with the Treasury. I'm sorry, not the Treasury, the Register of Deeds.
So, Mr. Weeks, I will entertain that motion.
Love to. Make a motion to appoint town administrator Lisa M. Green as the custodian of tax possession property, who shall have the care, custody, management, and control of 69 Wood Street, Hanson, Mass. 02341, to act on behalf of the town, notwithstanding any provision of law, ordinance, or bylaw inconsistent here within, to sell at public auction 69 Wood Street, Hanson, Mass. 02341.
So moved.
Second.
That was a motion.
He made the motion. I need a second. It's okay. The night's getting late and we're getting punchy. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And we are moving right along. And I would like to mention that Ms. McDowell, and I don't know if you like to refer to her as Mrs. or Ms., and.
Miss.
Miss?
Miss is fine.
Miss, okay. Has done a great job of trying to help us catch up on some minutes. And this has been the bane of my existence for quite some time, that we are behind on minutes. And so we have now got June 14, June 21, July 19, August 9, September 27, October 11 here for approval. Have you all had an opportunity to read through them?
Prefer individual motions or just as a blanket?
I am very neutral on that. If you want to, I'm trying to think if there's any that everybody might not have been at, let's just quickly.
You can still vote to accept the minutes even if we weren't at the meeting.
That is true. That is true. Yeah. But sometimes people feel a little prickly about that. I don't personally have a problem, but I know other people.
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes the way they're written.
That's presented.
Yeah.
Can you just list the dates?
Oh, June 24, June 14, '22, June 21, '22, July 19, '22, August 9, 2022, September 27, 2022, October 11, 2022.
Second.
Okay. And I have just a couple of little minor, they're not material changes, Lynn. Well, one of them was. At the last meeting, it said that I, let me see. Yes, on our October 11 meeting, it stated under new business, Ms. Fitzgerald stated, the board will not be answering questions, yada, yada, yada. Profanity will be tolerated. I assure, I assure you. That was not what I said.
It was a little bit of a terrible change.
Yes. So we just need to insert a little "not" in there. And I think that would capture the spirit of what was actually said. So would that change? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Ms. Green, Town Administrator Report.
Okay, yes. Madam Chair, members of the board, first and foremost, I just want to again, emphasize that Special Town Meeting is November 9, the day after the election day, 7:30 PM at the Hanson Middle School. Please, please come to Special Town Meeting. And again, I had part of the McQuan in there, but I had talked about that earlier. And I received confirmation from Tom DiPaolo, who is our Maya representative, that we indeed, they are not charging us any general liability for the McQuan. It's already included in the premium that we paid, saving the town $38,000. So that confirms that transitioning to Maya is saving the town $79,933 per year in insurance premiums. And I just want to note that Jake Mate, our intern from Bridgewater State, he has been, we have been working with policies. And he is, he researched and he is drafting a public records request procedures policy that we, I plan to have before the board in the very near future to consider and possibly adopt. And what this will do is this will provide step-by-step guidance to all department heads on how to handle a records request. It will also include a draft letter, form letter, that's drafted by town council, that will give an estimate on the fees. It will include that. So this policy, I think, will be very, very helpful to all our town departments. And to make sure the town is on the same page, all the departments are on the same page as far as what fees we are charging for records requests. So that will be coming before the board in the near future. He's also, we've also, he's been going through our policies book. We have a large policy book. So he's been going through that and creating a spreadsheet of the name of the policy, the date it was introduced, the date it was adopted. And what we're going to do is we're going to start reviewing these policies, because some of them are pretty old and need some revisions. So that is something that we are working towards, as well as the social media policy, which was actually adopted by the board in June of 2018. There was some suggestion made, made that they wanted to see some language modification as far as records that were available for public records requests regarding social media. So we're still trying to basically see what other towns have added into their social media pages to know what direction to go with the social media. So again, you'll see some of those policies come on in the near future for adoption and reconsideration from the board.
Well, that's delightful.
I would like to, Lynn has started our license renewal process for common BIC. The, what else you've gotten out there? The alcohol licenses, our entertainment licenses. So basically, we are, basically, we're two weeks ahead of schedule in starting our licensing process. So we still hope to see a very smooth licensing process, so that all of our licenses are ready to go. And they're all before you by the December 13 meeting, so that all the licenses can be signed and everybody can have them in their possession by December 31, when the old ones expire and the new ones start. Also, again, I'd just like to recognize some employees. First of all, Steve Moberg, again, our IT director, who has been working basically almost night and day to deal with some phone issues over at the fire station. He's been working to get the security cameras at Camp Kawani up and working, together with our Charlie Baker as well. The two of them make a great team. They are finishing up that process and then working really hard to keep all of our technologies basically up and running, so that we can continue servicing the residents. Also, our town clerk, Beth Sloan, and Assistant Town Clerk, Jean Kelly have been working, again, nonstop. They're busy with, with early voting. They really need to be recognized because they're doing a lot of work right now. As well as having the election on November 8 coming up and town meeting on the 9. So kudos to them and Bravo for all the hard work they're going to be doing in the next few days. Also like to update that the building inspector has been following up and sending out enforcement orders that include fine letters to some of the properties that were discussed in an earlier meeting. And also to announce that the, I don't know if you remember a little bit back, that Tony DeFrayis and I were putting together some one-stop grant programs with Tony maybe basically taking the lead on those. We were, we just found out that we were awarded two of the grants. We were awarded $60,000 to update our master plan. We were awarded $90,000. We were awarded $90,000 to make pedestrian upgrades and improvements over by the MBTA station, the commuter rail station. Unfortunately, these were very competitive grants. We did not receive a grant for the brownfield study at the Hawks Ave, the stormwater management, or the boardwalk. But that doesn't mean we can't reapply for that in the future. So I just, again, want to recognize Tony DeFrayis for all his hard work on that. Each of those applications was about 35 pages, so...
Yeah, kudos on that. That is amazing. And may I just chime in that the pedestrian walkways on Main Street is, was a byproduct of the Economic Development Committee recognizing that we were actually getting people telling us they felt uncomfortable walking from the train station on Main Street, and that got Tony in thinking like, what money could we get for that? And it might not completely solve the problem, but it's money we won't have to expend towards the problem. And potentially, we might, again, be able to leverage some ARPA funds or something else to make that a little bit better. I really appreciate Mr. DeFrayis every time I work with him. I just find him to be professional and thoughtful and creative, and I, you know, the grants are just like the frosting on the cake, really.
Well, there's one additional, there's one additional pot of money that we were awarded, and this was a part of the municipal pavement program. And this, again, this recognition goes to Jamison Chef for basically networking and talking with a DOT official, getting us on the radar for them to look at a couple of our roads. And we were awarded, basically, the state DOT is going to come in, and they are going to do some roadway improvements to parts of Route 27 and 14. So the 27 project will include repaving and improvements to the roadway from the intersection at Route 27 and 58, where Michael's is and Sandy's Corner, going back down 27 to Franklin Street. So it's going to include that. And then Route 14 from the end of County Road here up to the Water Department building. So that is money that's probably close to a million-plus dollars worth of work that the state is doing for the town. Details will follow. We basically, you know, we got the award on that July 20th, so details will follow as, as far as when this will take place, there's engineering and things like that. So again, recognition and Bravo to Jamison for sparking that conversation with a DOT official and having that come to light. And that concludes my town administrator report for this evening.
And did anybody have any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I was going to say, I'm not going to get a second on a...
I voted for you.
Okay, somebody's slacking here, people. All right, all in favor? All right, great, thank you.